No, I sit downstairs now, so I have to make a special trip up to see. So, yeah.
Welcome to the August 22th meeting of Montgomery Boarding. I call this meeting your order. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Hiller, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able and remain standing for the Pledge of In vocatus.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Reverend E. Bernard Hurd Jr. from Calvary Baptist Church in District One. He will join us this evening for our invocation. While he's coming up, Calvary Baptist was founded in 1865 in a location that later became City Park and today is where our metro bus barns are at the Kansas River and Kansas Avenue. Soon after that, they built a large and glorious church and parsonage at Third and Quincy, which by 1928, according to that year's Colored Church Directory, had a growing membership of over 600. Calvary was relocated at the time of a renewal and the installation of Interstate 70 through Topeka to its current location at 433 Southwest Harrison, with members still carrying on their legacy of strength, community, leadership, and support. Pastor Hurd has pastored Calvary for 32 years, having taken over that position when he was called to the pastorate following the 34-year tenure of his father, Reverend Bernard Hurd Sr. Pastor Hurd graduated from East Topeka Junior High, Topeka High, Washburn University, and Washburn Law School. He served as an Air Force Judge Advocate for 21 years and, after returning home, served as Chief Prosecutor for the city of Topeka and then the Shawnee County District Attorney's Office prosecuting domestic violence cases until the year 2000. He's served on a variety of boards and continues with a private legal practice. He has four grown daughters and is married to the former Patricia White, who is with us also. Pastor Hurd.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Our Father and our God, we thank you for another day and another opportunity to be the people you have called us to be. We are grateful and pray for our first responders, our law enforcement, and all those who have chosen to unselfishly serve and work in our community in whatever capacity for our well-being. We especially pray for this body you have designated to confront the considerable, complex issues of our community. We pray that you would give them all the wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and patience they need to resolve these matters together as a body. Finally, we ask that you would help us all to be more neighborly in our actions toward one another and to live out the full meaning of Micah 6:8. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Give me my stuff. Tell you. They move you around. Okay, we'll proceed with item number three on the agenda. Presentation.
Roll call.
Pardon?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, yes.
Roll call.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Alcala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here, to play nicely.
Emerson.
Here.
Cale.
Here.
Nager.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have 10 present.
Thank you. Now we'll move to item number two, presentations.
This evening, we have a presentation on the Equity Access Shelter Program update, and Carrie Higgins with Housing Division will be presenting.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, governing body, for allowing us time to share this evening. We are going to do an overview and an update on the Equity Access Shelter Program. This initiative was first brought to us by Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala. She had done some research on Built for Zero and wanted us to look into that or something similar for our community. So we knew that our homeless population numbers were not declining, and in fact, our unsheltered numbers were increasing. So a team was put together, we did further research, and out of that came Equity Access Shelter that was launched on November 1st, 2022. This initiative is a single point of access for anyone that needs rent or mortgage assistance. So previously, if you needed help, you would have to call six to seven different agencies to try to find that assistance. And we are talking about individuals who are in crisis. They are either homeless or at risk of becoming homeless, and we were asking them to jump through all of these hurdles. So Equity Access Shelter is one number, one email address that individuals can call. It streamlines the process and makes it easier for individuals to access. It also makes the process much more equitable for everyone. So when an individual calls in, they will do an assessment with a staff member. That assessment gives each individual a score based on their level of need, their level of crisis. And then, as agencies have funding available, we pull names off that list based on those scores and send them to the agencies. That ensures that we are helping those with the greatest needs first and foremost. The other piece of the Equity Access Shelter initiative is outreach. So EAS staff do outreach as time allows, and we also work closely with our outreach partners as well. And then we also do follow-up with any individuals that receive assistance. So the goal is around that six-month mark. If you received assistance, we'll check in with you. We'll see how you're doing. If you need connected to additional resources, we'll give you those as well, anything that could benefit the individuals if they have a need at that time. This is a list of our partner agencies. As you can see, we have our main social service agencies that receive rent and mortgage funding in the community, and then it's also all of our outreach partner agencies as well. So our numbers, we have over 3,900 phone calls that have been received by housing staff since November 1st. Over 1,200 individuals have completed that assessment with staff, which takes about 20 to 30 minutes per assessment. We average about 50 to 100 phone calls every day. Those aren't all brand-new individuals needing an assessment. They may be updating information with us or checking the status of their name on the list, but 50 to 100 phone calls every day. We currently have about 1,000 names on that waitlist. This is in no way an indication of the success of the program. We have gotten really great data from this program, and for the first time, we have a single list of everyone that needs assistance in our community. And what the data has shown us through EAS is that we have a huge need in our community and that the funding just doesn't even begin to cover all of those needs. And of those, about 1,000 names on the waitlist, about 500 of those are on the waitlist for a voucher. So that would be our Shelter Plus Care Program or the Emergency Housing Voucher Program. So these would be individuals who need some sort of income-based assistance in order to sustain their housing. So they may be on disability, they may be waiting for disability, they may be on a fixed income, but in order for them to be housed and sustain that, they need fixed income-based housing. And then, over 2,000 households have been denied. You can see the various reasons for those, the biggest one being that they didn't return phone calls, emails, voicemails, that kind of thing. For referrals, we've sent 653 referrals to date. Those are 225 of those are for the vouchers, so those are those income-based vouchers that some individuals need. And then, 423 are for either rapid rehousing or homeless prevention. The rapid rehousing would be they need first month's rent and deposit. The homeless prevention would be they need one month's rent assistance in order to avoid an eviction. And then, five for mortgage assistance. And we have settled into, pretty consistently, we are able to send about five to 15 referrals over to the agencies each week. It does vary quite a bit. Some agencies get funding throughout the year at different times, so it does depend upon their capacity, but on average, about five to 15 a week is what we've been able to send pretty consistently. Outreach is another piece of Equity Access Shelter. So we work closely with our outreach partners in the community. That would be Vallejo, the Topeka Rescue Mission, and the Police Department's Behavioral Health Unit. So we've been out at Travelers End very frequently over the last few weeks, making sure those individuals are getting connected to not only EAS, but the housing piece and any other resources that might benefit them. We visit encampments before we do any of the cleanups to ensure that those individuals are connected to resources as well before we're moving them out. And then we have a many-point-in-time that we're going to be doing on August 30th on the Shanga Trail to get an idea of how many individuals are on Shanga and also starting to get those individuals connected to resources as we look at some of the different camping ordinances that might be coming down the line. And then, goals. We have three big goals for the program that we would like to see. The first one would be adding an EAS Navigator. And we did put this in our 2024 budget. We talked about it a little bit a few weeks ago. So we have a large number of individuals who are not able to go to an agency and do the legwork on their own to become housed. So we pull their name, we send them to an agency, but they're not able to fill out their applications or look for housing or gather the documents that are required for that piece. So what's happening is they're falling off midway. We have a few community resources that, if you're part of the agency's specific program, they will help you with that piece, but overall, in general, we don't really have that resource in our community. So the EAS Navigator would walk alongside those individuals that need a little bit of assistance, so we can ensure from when their name is pulled that they are getting all the way through the process to housed. The second would be to utilize a great resource we already have in the community, and that is Impact Avenue's one-stop-shop. We call it Impact Thursday. Every Thursday during the school year, we meet at Garfield Community Center. We have over 41 different partner agencies that are onsite, and we want to open this up to EAS individuals, to other agencies, so that these families and individuals that we are helping get housed can also get those wraparound services, so that we are really looking at what are the root causes of some of these issues, the root causes of homelessness, and we're addressing those as well, so that when we're paying those rent funds to help somebody get housed, they're able to also sustain that housing. And then the third one is to find a way to increase rent funding in our community. So we talked about the approximately 1,000 people on that waitlist. Until we can find a way to increase funding in our community, we really can't start pulling a lot of names off that list and really make a dent in those that are needing assistance. So we're going to share a very short video with you, and then after, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
When you become homeless, it is such a shock. I learned to sleep places I never would have dreamed I would ever have to sleep. And I pulled every piece of paperwork I could find with any name on it I could find to help, and it gets to where you feel hopeless. And then you start feeling different about yourself. Whatever's been wrong in your life will raise its ugly head, but it almost becomes something you can't unattach yourself from for a while until you realize you're so tired of it.
Equity Access Shelter is different than traditional housing services because it makes it easier to access assistance and helps reduce trauma for families. Our families are in crisis. They're already struggling. They're concerned about their housing or they don't have housing, and we were asking these individuals to call multiple agencies, jump through different hoops to find assistance. So Equity Access Shelter provides one phone number, one contact, and it makes it easier for an individual to receive assistance.
Our clientele really struggled with hope was seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, and it can be very overwhelming having to go to multiple agencies in order to get just a little bit of those needs taken care of at a time, just chipping away at the barriers. And at times, they can make big leaps, but then there's always something else. And so having the one-stop-shop and everything under one roof and streamlined really helps just speed up the process, let them see that there is hope, let them not get as overwhelmed by all the options and all the different organizations that they need to interact with.
I gave up hope a lot, so I just stayed out there, just ran them up, and that's how I realized this was not me, and there has to be help. And it was so nice to call one number, talk to one person, and formulate a relationship with that person. There's always another barrier. There's always another struggle. There's always something else, but don't give up, because I'm almost there. I'm almost into a home. I hope within a week. And that makes me want to cry, because I would want anybody to know that we're worthwhile people, and we can give back. We just need somebody to care about us and help us realize that there's still that person in us.
Moving from working in silos to all of us working together and collaborating, it takes time, and we've done it. We now have that single source for anyone needing assistance, and that is just so exciting and much-needed for our community.
Councilman Cale and Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Just going kind of in order with the presentation. On the community partners, I didn't see the VA as part of that, and I know there's homelessness programs with the VA, and as a city, I don't see us taking advantage of things for veterans that we don't have to pay for, then that the VA will pay for. So I think that's something to look into. And then with the navigator position, as a person that used to be on government assistance, I think sometimes the best person to deal with those situations is the person that maybe one of the applicants that might have a good resume or something like that, that they've already gone through it and know the process, rather than sometimes hiring someone off the street. And then they're also more apathetic of someone going with that. So I'd see, you know, maybe even looking through those applicants for the program as a person for that navigator position.
Yes, great ideas. Thank you, Councilman. We are currently also looking at additional agencies to add as partners as well, so I will take note of that and reach out to them as well.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. I know, Carrie, that when we first started in these meetings, only a handful I've been involved with and just let it go, you know, the way that you all saw fit, that the VA partnership had been talked about before with Rockford, Illinois, with their Built for Zero. And at that time, they believed that, you know, in the initiatives that they took part in, which were strong mayoral and VA, that that is what they opted for, but we went a different path here. So I did want to ask, with the outreach partners that are listed, what does it take to be a partner with EAS?
A willingness to work with us, to contribute to Equity Access Shelter that looks different for different agencies.
Okay. And all of those, and I'm not pointing to any particular one right now, I'm just asking very generalized questions, is the flow of information goes both ways? In other words, data that you have, but that they have also, is being shared with you and is important to the success of EAS and for a reduction of homelessness in the city?
That is what we expect from our partner agencies. They're all, each agency gives different levels of support to the program, but that is what we actively strive for with all of our partner agencies.
And are you still working on that to get to that level with some agencies?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, when we had had the meetings with Built for Zero, they had talked about once they found housing for the unsheltered person, the homeless person, they didn't just drop them off in that apartment or that house or that tiny home or whatever. The wraparound services were crucial. So where we're at right now, we have not been able to offer that constellation of services around them, but this is what you are aiming for in development with Impact Avenue's?
Yes, that is correct. We are missing that piece, that wraparound service piece, which we know is crucial in order for them to sustain their housing. So we're actively working on adding partners, utilizing that Impact Thursday where we already have a one-stop-shop in place. We've had, as you know, contact with Built for Zero staff several times so that we can figure out how to better model our program after what they are doing that is successful.
Right. And I understand the first time when we had actually, when we had talked about bringing the Built for Zero here as the first of its kind in Kansas to see what kind of imprint we could make with the reduction and getting all partners on board, that was posed, but there had been the suggestion, you know, the suggestion to go into Built for Zero, become Built for Zero Topeka, Kansas. That way, we would have, be able to lean on and lean into their community solutions, their Built for Zeros across the country as help was needed, because they say it's all very fluid and moves continuously. That's one thing they stress over and over. So, and I know that I brought that suggestion forward. Is there the possibility that, from either Rhian or from you, that you think that the program may be stronger with that coalition of Built for Zero? I know you say they're not taking it, you know, anymore right now, but when they are opened up again, do you sense that that might be something that can strengthen that, you know, that toolbox that you can borrow from or, you know, steal from, whatever, to develop and deepen the program?
Sure, yeah. I can try to answer that. I think that where we're at right now, I'm still fairly new and wrapping my arms around everything that Carrie and this team has accomplished by bringing on EAS, but being able to connect with some of the partners in Rockford, they've been very forthcoming and willing to share with us, so it's been great to have that partnership there. I do think that eventually, if that program opens back up and they're accepting new partners, I think it's something we should explore. I don't know the answer until I see that, but I think all options are on the table to improve the program always.
Okay. And with the, trying to find funding for more rental assistance, because what you guys are telling us right now is that there is a waitlist. So if an unsheltered person comes to you, they're going to have to be on a wait, on a waitlist.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And so, this money that was coming down from the feds, I don't know, I think it was billions, I could be wrong on that. Is there any way, are we tapping into that? Do we have, I don't even know if we have a current grant writer on staff or not, not just your staff. I mean, we had one for the city, and then she left, so I don't know if we still have her. Yeah.
There have been some grants recently that, we have some other staff members that are not traditionally grant writers, but are trying to apply just so we can put our name in the ring, but no, we don't have a grant writer on staff.
I get that, and thank you for that. City manager, I would ask, I don't think we can stress enough how important a grant writer is for a city. A good and seasoned grant writer that may take some money to hire, but, and I don't know, I don't think that's in the budget. Is it, a grant writer in the budget?
Freddie's right here to talk about it.
Yes, ma'am. The grant writer position is in the city budget for 2024, and actually, with HR, we are sorting the applications since the job posting has been active for, I believe, about two weeks. We have received a few candidates, and we're going through the process to interview them and make the selection.
Well, I would just hope too that we are aggressive in it, even if we have to go look outside, because everyone needs a good grant writer if they want more money to come in. So, and we can't expect our staff that is not, you know, deeply immersed in that realm to be able to come up with the big dollars. So thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. So of those half that are on the wait, the 524, give or take, I guess, give it a percentage, if you had all the money today, we gave you the check, is there actually enough housing to put them all into?
Great question. That's hard to say. We continue to build relationships with landlords. One of the things that we need with some of these individuals is, I call them second-chance landlords, landlords that are willing to give somebody another chance, that maybe has a recent eviction or a felony on their record. And we've been pretty good about reaching out to landlords and building new relationships and partnerships, but I don't, I couldn't answer that question.
Right. But certainly with, there's, certainly right now, we could probably get a pretty good portion of them if you just had some dollars at your disposal.
Yes, sir.
Right? Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, you talk about the money for rent. Is that to move in or to stay in that place or to not get put out? I mean, what does it entail?
It is a combination of both. So, and I can get you a breakdown, I don't have it tonight, but of those 1,000 that are on that waitlist, 500 of them need either rapid rehousing, which would be first month's rent and deposit to move in, or homeless prevention, which means they're already housed and they need a month's rent to avoid eviction. So we have all of that tracked in our system, but it would be a combination of both.
So this money also includes deposit, then?
Yes. For individuals that are homeless, the goal usually is for an agency to pay first month's rent and deposit to get them in and sort of get them settled, and then they're able to take over rent moving forward.
Is this just for single individuals or families or both?
Both.
Because I know if you're talking about Impact Avenue, all they cover is families, am I correct?
That is correct.
So, I mean, even though they'd be a good partner, for the single person, that's not going to help with, help them with not only helping them, but with the wraparound services as well or following them?
It would, what it would do is it would open up the Impact Thursday, the one-stop-shop, so that those individuals could more easily get connected to all of those resources and start getting connected to those agencies. You are correct, it wouldn't help with someone following them, like long-term case management.
And I think that's just important, if you will make note of that, because we have a lot of single individuals that are homeless. And so I think if we're really going to work on this, and I think we need to look at the whole picture and make sure that we find partners to help them as well. That's my theory.
Hey, Carrie, really quickly too, I know that before I went to an Impact Thursday, I don't think I really understood what all some of the services were that our partners were bringing. Could you maybe just highlight some of the more unique services that people come with?
So we use, with Impact Avenue's, we use what's called an Arizona Matrix. So there are 16 different domains that we look at, and we try to have a partner agency that fills every domain. So it's going to be, we have employment services, mental health, physical health. We have the ID people onsite. We're getting ready to have the Kansas ID onsite as well. We have DCF. I'm forgetting a ton. Really, anything that a family could possibly need assistance with, we try to have an agency on board. We're continually adding new agencies as well. Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Health Access.
Yeah, I think what surprised me the most was local partnerships with businesses that were providing mattresses to families that don't have mattresses. I mean, we have really strong partnerships with local companies.
And not just mattresses, they provide brand-new beds, box springs, frames, everything for every individual when we're able to move them into housing, which is huge.
And I think that's great, but again, I think we need to also remember the single people that we need to get off the street as well or that need assistance as well. And I'm all for Impact Avenue, but they only focus on the family, and we have a lot of individuals. Now, you did mention the IDs. Are we using the police IDs or are we using them? Or are they state or what are they?
Yes, we start with the police, the city IDs, and then, once they have that, they're able to go to get, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Good, good, because that started out of our program, and I think it's a good program. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things. The first is, we obviously had a lot of services in place to some degree, a little scattershot in how they're being operated. Councilmember Valdivia Alcala brought this idea forward, has done a great job of making sure it stayed on track, but I think Carrie and her staff deserve a lot of credit for how far they have come in a year and the work that they've done to organize this and really get, see some of that vision and make it happen. So we don't want that to go unsaid tonight. The second thing is a request of the city manager. At some point, as we talk about where resources are going to go for money we put aside and what's best, it would be nice to see what the average cost of this program is on that waitlist, so we can have some metric that says, this amount of dollars helps this many people, and as you go up, how many? how many people we could help with actual dollars. So as we're looking at budgeting and we can know some actual amounts to wrap our head around, that would be very helpful.
Councilwoman Hiller?
This sharing just spurs a lot of questions for me, as you can imagine, but first, I mean, it just sounds like you've fallen into the right place at the right time and that you're doing a great job with it. Just want to send out some kudos. What I'm thinking, because I know a lot about what you've done before, is you've, you've been the, the manager for what, what they call continuum of care before. It really was a term that we had that then HUD adopted and so it became a program, right? But, and with that, you all, long before even that came in, Topeka had a network of the emergency aid agencies that kept track of all the clients, kind of to keep people from going out and shopping, all agencies, but it gave a shared database at first. And as, as things have progressed, you are the keeper of that HMIS database as well as the overall continuum of care, at least keeping the records on what we're doing, right?
Yes, ma'am.
We haven't had this role though, as you've described it before, and obviously, you or the city and you have stepped up to the plate, all of a sudden put, what, about five people in place that didn't exist before. As we go into our homeless planning and work, couple of questions. One is, that I think we should ask ourselves and you probably have, is the city, in your, in your opinion, the right hub for this wheel? Or is, you know, we had a network before and we've sure stepped up. And you don't necessarily have to answer it right now unless you've talked about it and have some pro and con.
I think that it definitely is something that I need to think about further, but I will say that we are, we're required by HUD to use the HMIS system and we are the lead for that, we're the lead for the COC. So in a lot of ways, we are already that hub of data, and so in a lot of ways, it does make sense for us to continue to sort of be that hub. But it's just as important that we have the partner agencies and that we are working together as a collective.
Thank you for that, and, and I, I think of that as we go into this whole process of trying to examine what we can do for homeless folks in the community, and this would be a question to you, but I hope it's already been answered. Are we planning in the homeless work that we do over the next, whatever it's going to be, six months, to look at that entire continuum of care, that homeless prevention, the immediate action, and then the follow-up, rather than just get those folks out of, off the trail?
I think so. I think the goal of the Homeless Innovation Group is to really come in with an open mind and look at everything, every possible scenario, every possible, what are, what are the problems, what are the solutions, and really look at how we can work together as a community, but then also, what are, we have a lot of great things already in place, how do we build upon those and bring those together better as well?
I'm really glad to hear that, because I think if we really want to solve it. One last question, and that, traditionally, the Housing Authority has had a waiting list of about 2,000 for Section 8, and you said you have a waiting list of 1,000 to 2,000, and I, I see they're on your list as a partner. Is that the same list or is it 2,000 plus 1,000 based on your opening the doors that you have?
There will be some duplicates on both of those lists, and they have the Section 8 waitlist, Topeka Housing Authority also has their public housing waitlist
Right.
which is a little shorter. So if an individual does need income-based housing, we do encourage them to be on multiple lists so that they have different opportunities and whatever one comes available first, they can utilize. So some of those numbers are duplicates, but not all of them.
It's still a big number.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Valdiviacola?
One more thing, thank you, Mayor, and I just want to say this. The consultant work hasn't started yet, and we all know it's going to be five to eight hours for those in the core group for up to eight months. And so, my personal opinion is we need to stop dumbing down our directors that are going into this and that work hard and know what they're doing. And there's no agenda right at this moment that you can show any of us because you're not the consultant. And I have every faith and belief that you guys are going to keep doing what you're doing, and we know it's good work. So, I believe in you, I believe you know what you need to do, and thank you.
Thank you.
Further?
Thank you, Carrie and Rhian, and it is a compliment to what you've been able to accomplish in this short amount of time. I, and as, and you and I have talked, and I've been very clear that if you tell me what you need to get by, I want you to ask for more than that, because we don't need to just get by. But thank you for everything that you've done.
Absolutely, thank you, and I'm working on that proposal for you.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number three, the consent agenda. Brenda?
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz granting Leroy Ware an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code, Section 945150 at seek concerning noise prohibitions. B is approval of utility engineering contract amendment between the City of Topeka and Alfred Benishen Company in an amount not to exceed $74,800 for engineering services. C, ordinance at the regular meeting of August 15, 2023, and there are no applications.
Okay, we've heard the consent, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to entertain, motion to approve by Councilwoman Nager, second by Councilwoman Ortiz, who we're really glad to have here with me today? We'll call the roll. Well, we, can we, everybody's here?
You should vote for it.
Yeah, okay. You can start your vote.
We've never, we've never seen the vote board.
I'm not, I'm not used to doing this yet.
Okay, all right, all right. We have nine yes with one abstention, so the motion passes.
It's a zero.
Oh, it looks like.
They never let up to say.
Okay, that's fine.
Clear the board.
We can re-vote.
No, 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 I don't give consent.
All right, so if you're good with that, well, all right.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number four. Brenda?
A is a public hearing to consider the establishment of the East Gate subdivision number four reinvestment housing incentive district, RHID, and adoption of the plan, and an ordinance introduced by interim city manager, Richard Neinstedt, establishing a RHID for the East Gate subdivision number four and adopting a plan for the development of housing and public facilities in the RHID.
Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and governing body, I'm just glad I'm here to see how that board works. I appreciate that. Thank you for all being here. As, as the city clerk said, this is the required public hearing on the rural housing incentive district to, to establish one in the East Gate subdivision number four. And Rhiana Friedman, Planning and Development Director, and Freddie Mahwin, Chief Financial Officer, will answer your questions and walk you through this.
Good evening. So, I think we've gone through this project a couple of times, but I want to start with giving just an overview of the district and retouching on some of the details again. So, the City of Topeka received and reviewed an application of the housing plan submitted by AMP Property Development, requesting the creation of an RHID for the East Gate subdivision. Staff is presenting a full project plan, and then we also have a development agreement that's been negotiated and ready to be put in place, looking for govern, governing body consideration in the creation of the district and approval of the housing development plan. So this provides a visual overview of the subdivision location itself. So, East Gate subdivision number four, this will include an extension of Hackberry Drive between 7th and 10th Street near Rice Road. And then you can see as well, the area that includes the development has been outlined and includes 23 lots. So this breaks down a little bit further and talks about the development itself. The project is going to be construction of 23 duplexes that'll create 46 total new dwelling units. Each unit will have four bedrooms and two and a half baths, and then an attached garage as well. All of these units will lease for $1,500 a month, meeting our workforce housing needs that are identified in the housing study. And then this gives you a visual depiction of what the homes will look like.
So in July 2020, the City of Topeka conducted a citywide housing market study and a strategy. The study identified the development for up to 420 new housing units per year or 2,300 units over a five-year period. These would be the needed level of housing units to address the, to met the market conditions. So in, in December 2022, I believe here, I have as the City of Topeka adopted a resolution establishing the RHID policies. In the policy states that the applicant must sufficiently detail about the proposed project, they must bear the cost of affecting the RHID incentives, they must certify that they are not delinquent on any payments on property taxes, as well as not having any outstanding utility bills, sonings, or property maintenance issues or codes. And also, they need to meet the BUT4 standard that must provide contractual and financial guarantees to ensure the project will be constructed as proposed. So this is the result of the financial BUT4 testing. So the BUT4 testing in simple terms indicates that without the incentive, this project would not, it would not be in the market. So there's few, there's three things that we need to estimate to do that. One is to identify the market rate of return, which is the rate of return a private developer would seek in order to at least use as a minimum threshold to what, to decide whether or not they would enter the market on this specific project. That's one. Two, we need to identify the internal rate of return without the incentives, and that rate is 5.93. And then we need to identify the maximum amount of incentive that the project is providing based on the contract and estimate that internal rate of return, in this case with the incentives. And as you can see in this chart, with the incentives, it's slightly above that minimum threshold, and this would indicate that the City of Topeka is not over incentivizing the project.
So, just to talk a little bit about where we've been in the next steps. So, there's an RHID review committee that meets for every project housing plan that comes through. This is made up of the mayor, deputy mayor, and then the council member whose district, the district is located in. And then, of course, staff, finance, utilities, public works, myself and planning. So we met on June 27th, discussed this, went thoroughly through the financial analysis that Freddie and Jeff White had prepared. So that's, that's why we're here now, opening the public hearing. We have our development agreement negotiated and ready to seek approval for the ordinance to be set that creates the district and approves the housing plan. I would offer up that I'm open to answer any questions, but for any detailed or specific questions about the development, we also have the developer here who has joined us, Freddie Vasquez, and then his partner, Koi Oberdean, are both in the audience as well, so they'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments and I'll make a motion.
I have to open the hearing.
Yeah, that's right, you got to open the hearing.
Yes.
So do I need to wait on my comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the matter? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the matter? What?
Carrie?
Oh, I can't see him. Okay, would you step forward, please?
Good evening, everyone. I signed up for the public comment, but maybe this will work as well. So, I'm Shamika King Sims. I represent a couple of the neighborhoods that are, well, the neighborhood that's involved in this particular project by way of the Citizen Advisory Council. And so I'm just here tonight to just kind of speak about what my hopes are and also maybe some concerns that I may have. I do want to state upfront that I did reach out to the developer, who's, I'm sure, a very busy person, as well as Councilwoman Ortiz and Councilwoman Hiller, just to make sure I kind of covered as much of my bases as possible. I've been hearing about the East Gate project for at least three or so meetings, and so it just kind of piqued my interest, especially from the Citizen Advisory Council point of view, because I've yet to hear a lot of con, well, contact with neighborhoods. I do know that East End NIA is in agreement with this project, which I'm very happy to hear. I'm just kind of concerned about the area just, I guess that direction would be west of it, as you go away from where the new developments will be to where the current East Gate developments, or older developments are that are not as well-loved. Councilwoman Ortiz and I had a very long conversation this afternoon about the process of getting those properties up to snuff, talking to the owners, making sure that they know what opportunities are within the city to address the blight that is currently in that area. I'm very cautious about bringing in new development when we haven't really put a lot of time, or at least so it seems, into revitalizing what's already present. So as we're doing new development, looking more closely at what's around it and how we can help those neighbors to make sure that they're getting the tools that they need to be, excuse me, at least on par with the new development, that would be ideal. With regard to the housing study, I know it's been referred to a lot as we start looking at how we're going to address these needs for making sure that people are housed. I think it does a great job of talking about programs that are successful nationally, but it doesn't provide enough data, statistical data, about what happens to neighborhoods if the quotient of rentals goes higher than ownership, or what makes a neighborhood successful, what percentage of, of homeownership is present in successful neighborhoods, and how can we model neighborhoods that are not as stable to be more analogous with those kinds of neighborhoods. So, I know that people will probably shake their fists mightily at their screen, but I think we need more studies, especially from a data and statistical point of view. I just don't think we have enough information about what rental properties can do or will do to shift the balance of stability in a neighborhood. And I think that's something that we could explore a lot more as opposed to just saying, we need more housing, we need a formula, we need it to make sense. So, that is my comment for tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'll do it one more time. Are there any other persons who would like to speak to the matter? Okay. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. And now I'll ask the governing body if they have some comment. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in District 3, in a much-needed area, in a much-wanted area. I actually always drive around my area and, and I went over there and I asked one of the workers if he was a developer, and he told me no. I said, he goes, that's him right there. So he came over and, would you please stand? We, we want to see you and recognize you, and thank you for pouring in your hard work and your monies in, in the area. We appreciate that. And so, I just want to say, so then I said to him, I said, look, I just want to go in, you know, that's me, I like to go in and, and look around. And he, he graciously opened the door and I, he didn't know who I was, but he graciously opened the door. And I went in, and there's four bedrooms and two and a half baths with a double-car garage. And then the next week I went back, he's already got renters in my apartment there, so I was like, well, I better not be snooping around here no more. So, you know, I just think it's awesome that he wants to build over there, and he did tell me he's caught some flack, but he's okay with that, because that's where he wants to build. So, we're really excited about that. The NIA, we discussed- The NIA, we discussed it. The property to, that Shamika's referring to is to the north of that. So we have a plan that we're going to put together and talk to the homeowners. It's kind of, kind of crazy. It's rental, HMOs, and then we have a lady that owns most of them that was inherited by her husband. And so she was, she's kind of struggled a little bit, and so we're going to see what kind of help that we can give her as well. But the, the neighbors to the west of her, most of those are homeowners, and they're glad to see something go in that area to the east of them. So I did receive a lot of calls, and I'm excited about this, and I would hope my colleagues would support this. And it'll bring me more votes for the next time I go around. But it'll bring, it'll bring nice, nice families in there. I did think about the votes, though. I did. But that's, that's all I had to say, and I, I know the developers and his attorney, if they wanted to say anything, they, they can feel free to. If not, I will make a motion, if it's appropriate, to, to support this.
There's a motion. It's taken by Councilman Emerson.
Hello. My, my, I'm sorry. My name is Alfred Vasquez. I'm the developer of this project, and I want to thank you, Lady Veriana. She's been helpful with me since we started Easygoing. Every, every time we call, she answers our calls. So I met you the last, you know, last time, so I don't know who you were, but she was on the job side. And you guys want to reach me, I'm always on the job side. So that's who I am. So I, and I want to thank you. Without the RHID, I don't think this project would be possible. As you know, you know, interest rate goes, they're going against us, and I think to keep housing affordable for people, that, that'll be the only way to do it. So we have, we're working on three duplexes at the moment, but as far as we can get. And you guys have any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
Seeing none, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really exciting. I think we've, we've seen several RHID projects in different states. This is the first one we're going to vote on. I'm thrilled that it's in District Three. Duplexes, I know Councilwoman Ortiz says duplexes, that's twice the vote, right?
That is.
But it, it's great. Rental property, nice rental properties. We, we really need that. This is exactly what that program was meant to do. So appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
What he said. I, I really agree. I think it's exciting. It's, it's interesting that we, you know, had a private sector, fully private sector project last week. It's bringing us all into this redevelopment mode. It's good to have reen in and, and economic development mode now in, in planning. Maybe we even need a housing summit for our neighborhoods and ourselves to just kind of get fresh, because the mixture of rates of rentals and homeowners, looking at, and East Gate's got quite a history, and, and looking at that for refreshing it is important, and, and we can, we can help do that. It, it, it is a great location, a great project. So thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, not knowing a whole lot about this project, but that Councilwoman supports it, her NIA supports it, the realm of her neighborhood supports it, and I believe that that colleague respect is important, along with the folks that, in her area, that want it. I am definitely going to support this, because it's a good deal, even though the last PUD that came through here got their butts kicked. But hey, short memory, though. Short memory. I'm done, but I support this. Thank you.
Anything further? We have a motion and a second. Ready to call the vote? You want me to show you how? Okay, the motion has been carried. Move on to agenda item 4B. Brenda, if you'll read, please.
B is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of council members Tony Emerson, Neil Dobler, and Michelle Hofer, amending Resolution Number 9385 to add to the 2023 FIRM Program, a project benefiting the Topeka Fire Department.
Mr. City Manager.
So thank you, Mayor and governing body. I believe we have talked about this in concept early on. So tonight, the fire chief and the public works director are going to talk to you about it in more detail, and hopefully we get a, you the vote in the affirmative to proceed with this project.
Chief, do you start, or Braxton, do you start?
I'll start, and then hand it over to Chief Phillips. We presented this matter to the Public Infrastructure Committee, and it was supported unanimously by all three of those. This is a great example of public works and the Fire Department partnering to work together to do necessary improvements for the fire stations, and basically to reshuffle the deck, as it were, when they brought this to us, so that we would be able to prioritize that and push other things back that were of lower priority. So true partnership between Chief Phillips and the Public Works Department.
Thank you. Yeah, I would, I would just second what Braxton said. Over the last number of months, we've identified that we're having significant issues in a number of our stations with the station alerting and paging system. This is the system how we receive emergency call notifications from the dispatch center. What we have found is not only, we thought maybe we could just replace some speakers and, and do some repairs at, at the beginning of this, but what we have found is that we have a lot of very old wiring, very old infrastructure, and this is a mission-critical piece of what we do. So with that, we, like Braxton said, we got with Public Works and looked at some other projects we had in the pipeline in the firm budget, and just reprioritized some things and was able to move this up and get, moving forward with this project.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments from the Public Information Committee? Councilwoman Ortiz. No, but you can still, yeah.
Chief, is this the little piece of paper that comes through that you guys take and read before you fly out the door?
That's part of it. That's not what we're replacing with this. This is the actual wiring and the speakers for the audible alarm that we receive. It's also the system that turns on in certain areas of the station, the lights, if they're not on, to alert the firefighters that a call is coming in.
So how old are they? Is that system, do you know?
I would hate to guess how old some of them are in some of the stations.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Questions or comment? Deputy Mayor. Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Dobler, second by Councilwoman Ortiz. Ready for the vote? When you're...
Emerson's going to be good at this, buddy.
Cool.
Another five months will lie in half.
Councilmember Valdivia.
Yes.
Yeah.
Put you over here with Emerson.
Testing, testing. Good again. There she went. Okay. All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Move on to agenda item 4C. Brenda.
C is a resolution introduced by the members of the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of council members Tony Emerson, Neil Dobler, and Michelle Hofer recommending approval of certain public infrastructure projects.
City Manager.
So Mayor and governing body, this involves two projects, and the reason they're on your agenda is because it's over 250,000. But it's the Kansas and Gordon intersection and the turn lane of southwest Topeka Boulevard and southwest 45th Street. And the Public Works Director is here to answer any questions you might have, along with Councilmember Emerson, who is the committee chair of this committee.
Okay. Mr. Copeland.
Well, with the great job that the city manager just did, introducing this and hitting the high points, truly, I'm here just to answer questions.
Okay. Any questions for Braxton?
I just say, Mayor, with the excellent job Mr. Copeland just did of presenting, I also cannot add anything.
Okay. All right. We've heard the resolution is read. Motion to approve by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Kell. Prepare for the vote.
All right, we have 10 yes, motion carries.
Okay, motion's carried. We'll move to action item 4D, if you will read, Brenda.
D is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of council members Tony Emerson, Neil Dobler, and Michelle Hofer, amending the 2023 to 2032 CIP and the 2023 to 2025 CIB to add Project 841107 Auburn Road to 29th Street to K4 Highway.
Mr. City Manager.
So Mayor and governing body, this involves a project we have talked about several times. And as you recall, it was brought to your attention by the Public Works Director after annexation of school district property at southwest Auburn Road. And with passage of this resolution, it includes the project in our CIP. So Public Works Director would be happy to ask and answer, maybe ask some additional questions, too.
Thank you. Braxton, do you have anything else, or?
Yeah, just, just to get everyone on the same page, because we've discussed this a couple of different times with the Public Infrastructure Committee, but I don't believe the bodies had this. The annexation of the tract of land at 29th and Auburn was to the center line of the road. And by doing that, that effectively made the responsibility of the ongoing maintenance of that portion of 21st, did I say? 29th, sorry, 29th and Auburn, responsibility of the city. And so in discussions with the county, they already have in design a project for major improvements on Auburn Road from K4 down to 29th Street to the tune of $5.5 million. It's actually going to turn that road into an urban standard of a three-lane road with sidewalk curb and gutter, five-foot-wide sidewalk on one side, 10-foot-wide shared-use path on the other. Their ask to us is $1 million. And after doing some research in that, the cost of replacing the existing pavement within that city road actually pencils that to the $1 million, which allows us to use citywide half-cent sales tax for that without having to do geo-bonding. So we're very purposeful in terms of what we talked to them about. The legal has put together an agreement to make it clear that the project, the city share of the project is the replacement of that existing pavement on Auburn Road that would be eligible for citywide half-cent sales tax. And so with that, I will gladly stand for any questions that you have on this project. As the city manager indicated, it is an amendment to the 2023 CIB, and this would be a county-construted, county-managed, county-bid project that the city would by contract have an obligation to pay for no more than the $1 million share, which was their ask.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this project. I don't have any questions for Braxton. We annexed the site for the school, and that's great. Our income from that site will be zero, as it's tax-exempt. It does open up property to the west and north that's currently undeveloped. So I guess I'm asking the city manager, not, not tomorrow, but sometime soon, to request planning to start an annexation plan for the undeveloped area west of the high school, north of the high school. I think the area to the south is already developed in, in the county, but we need to take advantage. This, this school's now cost us $1 million of sales tax money that could have been spent somewhere else in the city, and I'm fine with that. I'm fine with the school. I think it's great. It's growing. It's a great school district. Let's take advantage of it and grow the city west and north while we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Braxton, did you say that the county will maintain it?
The county will take care of the snow removal, but the ongoing cost, if it would need to be resurfaced, if it would need to be rehabilitated, that is going to be the responsibility of the city, because the city is the owner of that portion of the right-of-way to the center line, to the center line.
So that's all they're going to do is the snow removal, is what you're telling me, correct?
Yes, ma'am. For the, for the ongoing maintenance, it did, the, the city legally is the owner of that. The city is benefiting by only having to participate, $1 million in a $5.5 million project for the reconstruction of this road. The county is only going, it's only agreed to do the plowing of that, because it makes more sense to have a single entity plow both sides of the road, because, as opposed to just the city's plowing its side and the county plowing it that side. But we are legally responsible for those ongoing maintenance costs if this road needs to be rehabilitated or reconstructed.
Thank you.
Councilman Kell and then Councilwoman Hiller.
So as you're saying that we're responsible from center line over on that one, is, is there any other spots in the city that we have that, and have we worked with the county when it comes time for that road needing to be rehabbed, or we work as a single project rather than we do our half, and they decide if they're not going to do their half, or anything like that? Or is it a joint project usually?
We have numerous areas all around the town where city owns one half, county owns the other half, township owns one half, city owns the other half, and we absolutely work with those agencies in terms of figuring out what makes the most sense in terms of snow removal, as well as partnering relative to reconstruction. In fact, 10th Street, there is a portion of that that is city and county ownership, and we basically horse-traded that for some work on, on another street where this, where the city had a little bit of ownership, and the county was doing a project. So we absolutely are mindful, and we work well with our partners, whether it's township or county, to figure out what makes the most sense for all of us.
That's nice to hear. Thank you very much, Braxton.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I appreciate Deputy Mayor Dobler bringing up what he did about the acquisition and just nothing we can do about it now, but the, a shout-out to planning and the city manager. As I recall, when that annexation was considered, the budget impact was at zero. And I think that's not appropriate when, when we would be acquiring a property that would give us those responsibilities, especially if it wasn't going to generate taxes. And so hopefully, we can just be a little more aware of that in the future when it's presented to us, and then when we consider. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I guess, just in response to that, I checked on that, because I, I first thought, was there a mistake made or something? But I believe, I, I don't believe there was. I believe, and maybe the city attorney would like to, like to weigh in there, so we, we know what...
I think your fellow councilman wants to weigh in.
Okay.
I will not bore you with the long, winding, strange road this entire project has taken. Let's just say it ranges from confusion over who annexed what and when. There was a very longstanding, many discussions, meetings, debates, somewhat heated arguments between the school district and the county as to what was actually required in this area. Did they need a roundabout? What kind of roundabout? How far do they do work on the road for accessing and out when they're school days? And they spent many months going back and forth and finally coming to some agreement. And during all those discussions, we, of course, were included in part of that, realizing we had annexed this half of the road. And honestly, we're probably getting off a little cheaper than we, a million dollars, which is kind of hard to say sometimes, you know? Choke that down a little bit. So the county finally, I think, realized they needed to do the bulk of this, and the school district's also putting in a little bit for the roundabout piece. So for what it's worth, it's been a very long, tangled, lots of people involved in getting us to this point, to where we are now. So I'm not sure staff knew that this was going to happen. It probably all thought it was almost zero when they originally did it.
Councilman Emerson.
There is also a state law that even if we had chosen not to annex the road, the county can force us to annex the road up to the center line. So it is state law that requires...
That's what I was going to say, yes. I guess my only caution there is be cognizant that whenever we annex, they can force us to have half the road that it bounds. That's it.
Further comment? Seeing none. You heard the resolution. Is there a motion to consider? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Dobler. Seconded by Councilman Emerson. We prepare for the vote.
We have 10 yes, motion carries.
Motion's carried. We'll move on to agenda item five, non-action items. Brenda.
A discussion related to the City of Topeka 2024 operating budget.
City Manager.
So, mayor and governing body, our continuing discussion on the 2024 budget by our chief financial officer and budget manager, and we should be close to the end.
Yes, we should be close to the end. So, we'll start off this evening with our recruitment and retention discussion and our risk funds discussion. So, I'll invite the HR team up for that.
Good evening, Mayor, governing body members. Ernesto Del Rosas here, Chief DEI Officer. My office oversees HR. Just wanted to remind you that we provided some responses to your questions related to recruitment and retention last week. We're happy to expand if you have any questions or thoughts on those. Jackie Rosso, HR Director, will go over the presentation on a couple of slides, and then we'll be joined by other HR teams. Jackie.
Thank you, Ernesto. Good evening, everyone. On the recruitment and retention piece, a few things that we wanted to highlight was an overview of our services. So, we provide services for all city departments relating to attracting qualified applicants, and we also collaborate with department hiring managers on the interview process as well as the onboarding of candidates. In relation to retention, we try to help reduce turnover and foster positive work environments and promote employee engagement through professional development, appreciation, and also a healthy work-life balance. Some of the initiatives that we are working on in the area of recruitment and retention that I just wanted to highlight this evening include that we have collaborated with communications on developing customized videos and flyers and booklets related to specific positions that we are trying to attract a broad breadth of applicants for. We have also increased the city's brand and profile on Indeed and Glassdoor. And we've also been able to use our 2023 budget to boost advertising and target advertising for certain positions within those two platforms. We've added an apply feature through Indeed where applicants can submit their resume and not have to complete a City of Topeka application. And we've also got a sourcing database access where we can look for qualified candidates and then ask them if they would like to apply for certain positions with City of Topeka. The other thing that we've done to try to capture top talent is for some of our entry-level positions, including street maintenance and water distribution, utility system worker twos. At the time of the interview, if that appears to be a top qualified applicant, we will invite them back in and have a on-the-spot conditional offer, and that would be contingent on their successful completion of a background in drug screening, so that they're leaving the interview with a job offer before another employer can make one to them. So, I wanted to highlight just some of those initiatives in that area that we've been able to implement with the increased budget of 2023. Some of our goals for 2024 include implementing an electronic onboarding process where most of the new hire paperwork is done before the employee's first day, so that the first-day orientation is more of an experience of acclimating and introducing themselves to the organization City of Topeka. We've also been able to implement texting. It's a goal to implement texting within our application system so that we can communicate better with our applicants through text message. Many of the younger generation, their phones are with them all the time, so having that ready access. We're in the process of restructuring our new hire orientation, as I mentioned. And then, we want to implement more citywide onsite career fairs where we would host our own career fairs, highlighting our own positions out to candidates within the community. And that's what I wanted to share. We would be happy to answer any questions in the area of recruitment and retention that you may have.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Jackie, what does the intern program look like for the City of Topeka?
So, the intern program, we have really focused on a few implementations in the engineering area the last two summers. We have been going out to primarily KU and K-State during the school year, doing tabletop. Braxton and his team have went out with us, and we have been able to attract a few summer interns. We have, through that, we have provided boarding, transportation, if they didn't have transportation while they are here in Topeka, but an ongoing engagement after they leave that summer internship with Public Works staying in touch with them, maybe engaging them in certain types of projects, so that they are trying to stay connected with the City of Topeka once they leave and go back to school. That was kind of a pilot to see how that format works. We do have more informal, we have interns throughout the summer in various departments, including legal, public works, some in finance we've had over time. But the formalized experience with trying to keep that engagement was a pilot with engineering first that has proven to be pretty successful so far.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Question about in-service training. I know we do a fair amount of it, and what I don't, what I'm not sure of is whether a lot of that became online because of COVID or whether it was already online. Could you talk a little bit about what we're presenting for in-service and whether it's live or online and how it's going?
It's been a combination of both. The 2023 initiative that we started with this year was the all-in training, which was high-performance training. So, Human Resources has not put out a lot of in-person training since that was the initial focus. We are in the process of implementing an online training platform called Vector Solutions, which is already used by our police and fire departments. That will have online training embedded within it, and it will also help us with acknowledgements and being able to better track the training and professional development that our employees are doing. We expect that program to be online and pushed out to our employees late September, early October. In addition to that, we do, we make resources available, like the LinkedIn learning through the Topeka Public Library. We have instructions on how employees can access that. And we do look for different in-person facilitated training, because we try to have a variety, because people learn differently.
Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
Jackie, what methods do we use to track why people leave city employment?
So, we, when someone leaves, there is a, it's called a woo-foo that the department submits, and that's an in-house program. That is a first electronic notification many times of the reason, and it includes the reason and whether or not they provided a two-week notice, a less-than-two-week notice, if it's a retirement, various reasons like that. And when we receive that, or departments forward Human Resources a notice of resignation, then we reach out to the employee and invite them to an exit interview if they have not already left, and try to sit down in person with them and conduct an in-person exit interview. If the, sometimes we don't have a lot of advance notice, so we then can send a link out to the exit interview and hope that they would send that back, and then we capture that into a report.
What is our response rate to that? I mean, I'm sure it's low.
I don't have an exact number for you, but I'd be happy to kind of research that. I would say it's near 50% ballpark, but yeah.
So, and then I guess the third part of that is, what then is our process to follow up with what we get from the, I mean, doing the interview's great, but if we're not actually digesting what it says?
And that is what we've been working on, and that is in progress, and we hope to have something this fall where we can have aggregate information that we are sharing out with the city manager and departments. And if there's trends that we are noticing or something of that nature, that is the next piece that we have not gotten to here just yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Jackie, at one time, and maybe you or the chief can answer this, I know at one time that a police department was running a kind of an intern program where it was helping them bring in potential hirees to the police department with an opportunity to both work and attend worship at the same time. Is that activity still going on?
I believe you may be referring to the police cadet program where we were sending them to school, and then they were doing administrative duties within the police department. That program did end. We do still have two individuals that started as cadets that are now police officers currently with the police department, but that did phase out. I believe, and Chief Q can come up and talk to this, that we still do host interns during the summer for several weeks, and I'll let him elaborate on that.
I'm doing it to you again, Chief.
Good to see you again, too, Mayor. Jackie was right. I mean, that's the second part of it, her answer. We still do a summer internship program with college-age kids around this area, but also the much-talked-about trips down to Mississippi. We brought those kids in from several summers, and several council members have met them when they've been here for that. So, that summer internship program is still very much in act. This summer was a little bit lower numbers-wise, because we lost our college professor down there had a medical situation in Mississippi, so we kind of lost our hook down there. So, it was just kids from the local Kansas schools this last summer. But it's still very much up and alive, and we've actually had some hires out of it that have completed the academy as well.
That's good. However, we can continue to do that process and that program. I think it's really good. It adds to the diversity, but it goes beyond what we usually used to do years ago, who just put an ad in the paper. So, I commend the department for doing that and the HR for doing that. And if we can continue in any way to introduce people into the law enforcement field that way to help grow our numbers, I appreciate it.
Yeah. I certainly would second that, and I think Jackie and her staff have a tough job in today's world, recruiting and hiring. We have a committee that does recruiting and retention efforts, too, and try to gather that data that you were talking about. But it's a tough job, and her team does good work for us.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions for Jackie? Good. Well, thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Sean. Your presentation was excellent.
Wish that she'll come back.
So, the next area that I want to talk about is risk management, and I have with me Shelby Harville, our benefits manager, and Sarah Jones, our risk manager. And I apologize for not introducing Sean as our deputy human resources director earlier. But in risk management, we are working, we are responsible for the workers' compensation, the property liability, and vehicle areas for the City of Topeka. And so, we also this year, one of the initiatives I wanted to point out is that we, to comply with the new federal transportation guidelines, we have implemented our internal CDL training program, and Kyle Salmon as the CDL training coordinator. We started that program really up and running in March of this year, and so far, we have over 18 individuals. And I think there, since we last pulled the numbers, I think one or two more passed their CDLs last week. So, we are able to do about a four-week training and get them their CDLs, which is compliant with the new federal regulations, and we're doing that all in-house. So, some of our goals as we continue to look at risk going into 2024 is we want to try to decrease overall claims and the amount of time that employees are off work when they do suffer a work-related accident, and continue to look at our training and prevention measures in that area. So, between Sarah and Kyle and Jessica that focus on risk, they do attend departmental safety meetings, the committee meetings, the accident reviews, and then we try to collaborate with departments on training to prevent recurrence of certain types of things that are happening out there. The other endeavor that we are working on as part of, as we look at transitioning a new enterprise resource system, is self-administration of our claims. Right now, we contract with CorVel to administer our workers' compensation claims, and that is something where we feel that there's a way to improve and also save efficiencies and money by bringing that in-house. And so, part of that is to improve the experience for our employees, but we do need a platform for that, so that's why it's a longer transition as we look at what the ERP system may be able to do for us in comparison to what, if we would need a third-party claims administration software to make that full transition.
Questions for Jackie? Seeing none. Go ahead.
Thank you all.
All right. Mr. Mayor, as previously mentioned, I would like to share with you and with the governing body a quick summary of the estimated fund balance for the 2024 City of Topeka budget. So, the City of Topeka Finance Department heard loud and clear from the governing body that the committee expects us to have a practical fund balance. The 2022 annual comprehensive financial report showed a 27% fund balance in relation to the general fund total revenue, where the governing body would like to see this rate be targeted at about 20%. So, if I may, the general fund, it's crucial for multiple reasons. First of all, it acts as a safety net, enabling the city to cover unexpected emergencies or economic downturns without restoring to immediate tax cuts, I'm sorry, tax hikes or service cuts. Secondly, a healthy fund balance enables, it shows financial credibility. So, credit-rated agencies and investors view organizations with robust reserves as more physically responsible and less likely to default on debt. Furthermore, a fund balance mitigates risks associated with revenue fluctuations such as economic recessions. So, certainly, the purchase of Hotel Topeka introduced additional level of complexity. This acquisition increased the probability and the severity of the risk that we, as a city, need to manage effectively. So, the proposed FY '24 city budget will highlight a significant downshift from the previous fund balance level of 27% to 24%. While a 24% fund balance is still above the recommended 20%, it is important to recognize the implications of this change, especially in the context of the hotel purchase and the associated risks. The decrease from 27% to 24% suggests a deliberate choice to allocate resources and funds on other purposes or other projects. However, this reduction must also be weighted against the added risks of which possesses by the purchase of the hotel. And, Mr. Mayor, with that, we will be happy to answer any questions.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Thanks, Freddie. Did we just pass something last week to bond the purchase of the hotel?
Yes, sir.
So, we're not taking seven or eight million out of the reserves to buy the hotel, correct?
That is correct.
So, we're paying debt service of six, 700,000 a year on the hotel? Is that right? Is that right?
That's right, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller and then Councilwoman Ortiz.
That drives the question then. It's been a little bit since we've heard a report. What, how are we doing on the hotel?
You're asking me how we're doing with the hotel, so?
Well, I mean, there was the whole difference between whether we were going to spend $20 million and fix it up too, or whether we thought we had some, an entity that could manage it for us and that we could continue on where it is.
Yeah, for answers to the hotel, I would probably, is my colleague. There you go. Director Costley would probably, as a project manager, he would probably be able to answer these questions.
So Mayor and governing body, if you will permit Braxton to take a seat along with Freddie. Braxton can give you, and Freddie can give you a pretty comprehensive update report on where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. We are currently in the process of negotiating terms and conditions with a asset manager. This would be a third-party consultant that has expertise in the entire hotel business from food and beverage to rehabilitation. These are professionals that have done this for decades and decades. We have provided, the tentatively selected consultant has provided our outside counsel with a draft contract and we are in the process of reviewing that. In addition, we have made a selection for a consultant to do a stem-to-sterne analysis of the condition of the hotel, including all of the systems, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural building envelope, so that we have a much better idea of what it's actually going to take. We have heard loud and clear from you that our goal is to find a developer, third-party, to take on the ownership and rehabilitation of that hotel. Obviously, we will work closely with the asset manager. We will work closely with our financial advisor in terms of what that looks like in terms of financial package to attract a responsible third-party developer to come in. So that is a quick and dirty overview of where we are on the Hotel Topeka. Gladly stand for any questions.
If I could follow up with just one then. I mean, one of the things that we talked about as a body, new to the hotel ownership business that we are, was whether it made sense to keep the hotel open indefinitely versus close it. Is that still something that's being considered? Or are you pretty sure we can keep it open? I don't know about other people, but I've already had calls from people who are a little panicked because they had a, an event at the Maynor Conference Center, for instance, and didn't know if the catering would be around and whether their event would really come off. And, and that's the kind of thing you all educated us about to a certain extent when we first got started. Just double checking. My, my people were assured that everything would be fine.
We have heard crystal clear from the governing body that to the greatest extent possible, we are to keep that hotel open to make sure that people coming to visit Topeka who have conferences scheduled will have a place to stay.
And confidence therefore that their event will, will happen.
Councilwoman Duncan.
I guess I don't have a question for Braxton. I have questions about where we started the conversation on the, a drop from 27% to 24% is how much in dollars?
I would say that the number is relatively flat in terms of the general fund balance, but because this is in relation to the potential revenues of the city and the, the percentage change.
No, I mean, how much money?
Oh.
How much money is that 3%?
About 20, 27 million dollars.
No, the 3% is not 27 million dollars. So that's about 3 million dollars. So each percent is about a million dollars?
Would you, would you mind repeating the question?
Okay, so our, our, our reserve is at 27%. You're talking about reducing it to 24%. That means we're going to take 3% out. How much does 3% equal in dollars?
So when we're looking at the percent of general fund reserves to the total budget, that's going to change every year with the new budget. And so with the previous year, we were at 27%. With this new proposed budget, that would bring that total percentage down to 24% without spending the reserve.
Okay, but there's going to be money that has to come out of there to be spent on other things, correct? Honestly, if I'm not speaking English, please tell me, my colleagues. Right? We're going to be using dollars from that fund? No, we're just reducing the percent without actually using any dollars from our reserve to pay off anything in the upcoming budget?
That is, that is, to some extent, it is, it is correct.
No, either it is or it isn't. I don't know if that's to some extent.
So if we're looking at the fraction, the top of the fraction is 27.5. And between budget years, when the budget changes itself, then that bottom number of the fraction changes.
I absolutely understand what you're saying. With all due respect, that is fancy accounting. And we have sat here and repeatedly said, a few of us, it would be really nice to pay off some of that low-hanging fruit, one-time expenses with some of those dollars to help reduce the impact of the overall budget moving forward. I guess all I'll say is that appears that's not what we're doing. And I'm disappointed by that, that we've decided instead to slide the ruler over to change the percentage. I do understand why, but I, that was not what I was hoping would happen with some of those dollars. And that's just me personally.
That's a fair assessment, sir. One thing that I would say is that if this budget provides the opportunity for the city manager to, to adjust any of those additional expenses or whatever the governing body believes that it's appropriate to use cash funding instead of bonds or any other financial method. So by, by, by having that fracture, the fraction or the nominal value at that level, it does not limit the ability for the city manager and for the governing body to make those determinations in the future.
Right, I guess the last thing I'll say is, and obviously your, your approach has changed. But I mean, a week or two ago, you told us you would be bringing us a list of some items that we thought you could pay from that fund. So obviously that has also changed.
I don't necessarily recall the list, but I can definitely provide you and the governing body with a list for, for items for you, for the body to determine. Yes, sir.
Well, if I could follow up, I guess with the councilman's asking, if you give us that list, that list should give us a total amount of what we're going to be able to pay for. I think that's, Councilman, is that kind of where you were going?
It is. I guess what I'm hearing is that approach has changed, Mayor. It sounds to me like because the budget changes and the amount goes up, the percentage goes down because we're trying to mitigate those reserves to cover possible concerns that they've expressed. I understand that approach. That is not the approach we were talking about several weeks ago. And so I'm just processing, I guess, in public as we have that discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Emerson and Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me wade into this mud here and see if I can make it even murkier. But I believe though, in the budget gentleman that you presented, you are paying cash for some things, correct? So you're not adding to the surplus because you're using extra cash we have in there right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that was based on there, some comments from the governing body wanting it to, for example, pay more than 2.7 million dollars in firm, which is the maintenance of all the facilities. So, so yes, sir.
So that's already in here. You're just not using reserve money. You're, you're budgeting that cash. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I was going to say something similar. I think if there are areas where we typically wouldn't have paid cash, but we are now, that this can be highlighted. I think what we've seen over the last three years is, you know, we've, we've asked to lower the reserves to something reasonable. Last year we cut, cut the mill levy by a mil, even though valuations went up and sales tax went up. And we just continue to see the reserves not only stay above where they should be, but grow. So it's just whatever it takes to get that number down, we've got to do it. And we've got to do it this year. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
I have a question. It's, it's, it's not about the hotel, but it's about the racetrack. I know we're paying down the bonds. Do you know where we're at on that?
Can you repeat the question? Mayor, can you repeat the question, please?
I know we're paying down the bonds on the racetrack. Where are we at on that?
I can get that information for you and send it to you. I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Emerson.
Thanks, Mayor. Last thing I'll say here, but Councilwoman Ortiz kind of, I guess, has brought to my mind that we also have several large projects in Topeka that have been taxed in for a number of years. That should be coming online, right? Mars, Home Depot, Bimbo Bakery, Home Deep, I already said Home Depot, I don't know. Target, Target Distribution Center. Do you know when those are coming online and?
Yeah, we, we have that list readily available that we can send to you.
That might be something good to know, to kind of know what future years are looking like.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Related to that discussion, and maybe you were going to get to this, but I read through your supplement three that came out today and, and asked you a question. Apparently with the various adjustments that you've done already, you're, where your balance right now has us reducing by a half mil with the adjustments you've made to the budget we have in front of us. Is that right?
That is correct.
That's a start.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Why we're on that subject, well, not that subject, but where are we at with the zoo? I remember when we trickled down, are, are we done paying?
So, so we will still pay our contractual obligation to the zoo every year. But with their new sales tax, we will actually get some of that money back.
So, so how much are we paying?
It's about $2 million that we pay each year.
So I thought, I thought that it would get to the point where we wouldn't have to pay anything. When, when I, with, with the contracts that, you know, it'd be five and then four and then.
I can answer that one. As the zoo board representative on behalf of the council, assuming projections stand pat beginnings, particularly in 2024, we should always be able to hold on to that money. I mean, something could go wrong, knock on whatever, right? They're going, but they're going to collect, it could be five, six, seven million dollars a year, which they split up. This year, I think the number was half a million. We're going to be, we're going to have to pay out about $500,000 of that 2 million because we can thank the state of Kansas, which through some accounting issues and fight with them about whether it started in January or April, shorted them on some of those funds. Our contractual obligation said we cover it. We did to half a million dollars. So this year we're definitely paying half a million dollars. But assuming all goes well, we should always retain that 2 million. The contract says technically that is, we give it to them, you know, we'd have to give it to them if they don't cover it, but they're going to cover it every year, so.
You, the deputy mayor, then councilwoman.
Then how much will we get back? Or we don't know until they, is that a percentage of what they collect? Is that how it works?
It's a set amount in the contract of that 2 million, whatever that was. It might've had a small ladder, but it's, it's a set amount.
Was that starting in 2024?
So they're not ever paying us anything. We just don't have to pay them anything anymore.
Got you, got you. So.
Deputy Mayor and then Councilwoman DeBia.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, as we're, I assume, kind of closing up here, wrapping up, Freddie and Adam, you guys have a tough job. This is a complex budget. Every time I go through it, every year, I realize how, I mean, I, I've seen budgets from a lot of places and this is probably the most complex that there is. You guys do a great job. You get a lot, we, we get frustrated and it shows and you bear the brunt of that. But just want you to know that we appreciate the job you do. Because if, if, if you weren't out there doing it, giving us this information, going back and trying things, coming back, we'd never get through this process. So even though, and I'm probably the worst up here at getting frustrated over things like reserves, but just know that we appreciate what you guys do. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. So with what Emerson, Councilwoman Emerson asked for, what Councilwoman Ortiz asked for, is there any way that when those answers are put into a document, that it can be shared with everyone on the governing body? So we can all stay on the same page? And then is there any way, Councilman Duncan, that we can get a small book report on where it is with the zoo? Because I don't think we, it's been a, it's probably been a minute since we've had any update on that. Something real small and condensed and tight. But again, just so we all have it. And I would say, yeah, you guys are probably feeling like you're getting your butts kicked, but you're really good because you're so good at explaining stuff one-on-one too. And that is deeply appreciated. So just don't be a bitch in this business. Thank you, Mayor.
And we'll make sure that information gets out to the whole body.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Duncan, when you do that, could you do that as a percentage?
No.
Okay, Freddie, Adam, you have anything further? Okay, thank you on behalf of everyone here. Councilman Duncan?
I guess this would probably be a good time, just as a point of clarification for all of us as to where we are in the schedule on this process and what the next September looks like. I don't know who, city manager or Freddie or, just give us the, where we're at and what's happening. I know we have a hearing and all that exciting stuff.
I have one more question over here from Councilwoman Ortiz.
Did, did you find my zoning inspector?
Yes, we did. So there is in the latest supplement, that was a change that we made, that we did add that additional FTE.
Thank you. Don't worry about Spencer, I'll take care of it.
And, and to follow up on that, so September 5th is both the revenue neutral rate hearing and the budget hearing. And then the following week on September 12th is when the governing body would vote to adopt the budget.
So related to that, we don't have a meeting next week?
Brenda?
Just checking. No, that's fine.
Okay, nothing further. Thank you both again. Move on to non-action item 5B. Brenda?
Discussion of possible amendments to the city's unlawful camping ordinance for consideration by the governing body.
City manager. Mayor and governing body, this is all the city attorney's presentation on camping.
Well, okay, with that kind of introduction, what could go wrong? So the city manager asked me to prepare possible options for you as the policymakers to look at regarding camping. Additionally, Councilman or Deputy Mayor Dobler last week asked for another specific version of camping. So what you have in front of you for the public's knowledge, so it gets a little confusing when you look and you got four different types of ordinances. I think a base level is, these are variations of ordinances that have been suggested in public comment or asked for by specific council members. There are four different types. You can't adopt all four of them. They would be confusing and they would contradict. So really they are to serve as a foundation for you to discuss and ask questions. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the law. But as an overview of what's in your packet and for the public and the governing body agenda that you can access online, is a memo that kind of gives the history of how did we get here, that the camping ordinance was adopted in 2019. It also gives the case law that as your city attorney, I worry about when we work in the realm of camping ordinances, as well as some future, looking at where we are going with recent cases such as Johnson versus the city of Grant Pass, which is, according to the news today, appealed to the Supreme Court. And so looking forward, trying to find that balancing act of how do you regulate for important public health and safety mechanisms while staying constitutional within the Eighth Amendment and prohibiting cruel and unusual punishment. Johnson versus Grant Pass is the newest iteration of this and it deals with civil penalties as well as prohibiting things like blankets, pillows and cardboard boxes. So in your packet, you have four different ordinances. The first one is one that was asked for in public comment period that would simply ban camping in public land inside established neighborhoods. Established neighborhoods is not defined. That would be something that you would have to decide of what is an established neighborhood to you. The second one is one that Councilman Duncan has asked for before in public comments about looking at location limits so that you could not camp in one particular location for longer than a set number of days. This is set at 10 days initially. Location limits are something that the federal park system uses. They have used for a very long time. The federal park system uses a five-day limit. So that is a very common area of law that has been upheld in the court system. The third ordinance that is in your packet, I think mine are in reverse order, but it is like the. is like the most broad ordinance that some cities in California have gone to that appear to be constitutional. And this is really a complete rewrite that bans camping anytime other than the hours of 7:00 PM to 8:00 AM, I believe. And then it also requires moving things and locations and critical infrastructures. And then finally, the last one in your packet is the most recent one, which would ban camping within 500 feet of the center line of any trailer sidewalk inside city limits to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city. I believe you have received a map from the planning department, Dan Warner, that shows what that would look like, the blue is everywhere in the city, that that would prohibit camping, as well as a supplemental memo from me pointing out some things, if they would like to go that route, that you should probably think about showing how far is 500 feet, what are our average setbacks of houses, does that make sense everywhere in the city or not? And I am happy to answer questions.
Give me a second. Madam City Attorney, we have a gentleman signed up today for comment. Would it be appropriate to take his comments before we get into discussion?
That is always the discretion of the chair, so you could do that whenever you would like.
Okay. I think, pardon?
I can do it at my discretion, sir.
Thank you, though. Yes, I think I'd like to give him the opportunity to speak before we get into our discussions. Comments may or may not help us in our deliberation, so. Mr. Wagner, if you would step forward, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving me some time tonight to speak. Wanted to thank you for taking into consideration this enhanced no camping ordinance for Topeka. Representing downtown business owners, I want to say thank you for listening to us, especially over the last few months, about some of the issues that we've been having downtown and really helping to move forward to solve a very large and complex problem. We have a lot of positive momentum going on in downtown and Topeka in general, but there are some issues with the unsheltered community in our town that, if we don't address them soon, are going to staunch all of that momentum. You have my commitment as the DTI Clean and Safe Task Force Chair and from my company, Aim Strategies, to assist you and the city in any way to find solutions and problem-solving on this issue. In conclusion, we highly support the enhanced no camping ordinance that's being discussed today, but the measuring stick of these things will be whether or not they are enforced and upheld if they are approved. Our community needs that to happen. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Madam City Attorney, you want to go ahead and proceed?
Sure, I think we're at the happy to stand for questions stage.
Okay. Councilman Kell.
I wanted to get some clarification of about three, four years ago, I think it was, and I can't find it anywhere. Didn't the city ban RV parking, like living in an RV on residential property?
I would see if Dan Warner is in here and knows the answer to that.
Councilman, I don't know what happened four years ago necessarily, but as a zoning action, we treat that as essentially a second dwelling unit, which typically isn't permitted on a residential house, on a residential property that already has a house. So we enforce that anytime we get a complaint about an RV on a property through a zoning enforcement action.
Okay, I just, my, I know this, to me, it's a similar issue, and it ties into this, where we have an ordinance, or even that's an enforceable thing there, where we have people that want to revamp houses, can't do it, and there's a good example, right across the street from Avondale East years ago, there was a person who wanted to do that, was told they couldn't have the RV there, kept their tools there, house kept on getting broken into over and over and over, and then the person, because they just wanted to stay there for security of their equipment and their supplies, and the house kept getting broken into by homeless people, and the stuff was stolen. So it's kind of aggravating that we're, you know, we have something like that on the books, where we have, where it could be someone that's trying to help the city, and then we're just, we're not really doing anything with teeth so far, to me, with the homelessness. It's destroying private property, fires, I mean, when I was running for office two years ago, fire right outside Ben Swinger's glass, and it almost caught the building on fire, and that could have been several people out of work for a very long time. You know, like I said, lots are getting destroyed, private property is getting destroyed over and over, and people having to come out of pocket on that. I can't remember, I can't see what my note said there, but I just think it's weird, it's like we've almost, as a city, sometimes focused on the wrong things, and haven't put anything in there to help out people that are actually trying to do the right things for our city, because there are, like I said, there are several developers who would pull up an RV so they could protect their property during times of revamping a house in the city, but they just, they've given up and gone into another career fields, because they've got so tired of their equipment and supplies being stolen all the time, because they can't be at the house 24/7. But like I said, I think we really need to look at this long-term and come up something quickly, because this is an ever-growing problem, and especially, I know Councilwoman Vadiakola said it's very big in her district, it's very big in my district, and it's going to get a lot worse once the couple of those hotels shut the doors, because a lot of those are holding people that are just making it day by day by panhandling and saying, and travel in there, but once they shut the doors on that, it's going to get a lot worse in my area.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to the city attorney for not only getting this drafted quickly, a lot quicker than I expected, and then a good memo that covers some of the potential issues, and, you know, having seen the map, the GIS map, it's clear that, I think the 500 feet's probably still a good number on the trail system. Most of the places, you know, the routes for most of the trails is near creeks and through county parks and places like that, unless there's another thought, I think the 500 feet would, would, still makes a lot of sense. Thinking about sidewalks, and again, we're tying this back to safety, so again, if you're driving your car and maybe you don't like what you see, but it's going to be tough for somebody to come after you. If you're walking, if you're walking by yourself, if you're pushing a child in a stroller down a city sidewalk, you're in danger if folks are around that are up to no good. Understand that the 500 feet for city sidewalks may be a little bit excessive. I think a typical block's maybe between 300 and 600 feet deep, so that clearly overlaps. As you pointed out, 30 feet is a typical setback to the front of a house or business, and I could certainly see narrowing that down to 30 to 50 feet from the center line of the sidewalk along an existing right-of-way, for instance. I think that would, that would really cover those areas where folks, well, cover residential areas, and that's really part of the intent. So I'll just throw that out there. I know we're not, I don't think we're making motions or anything now, but see what the thoughts are on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Vadiakola.
Thank you, Mayor. Adding on to what Councilman Dobler is saying, I have, I told Councilman Dobler Tuesday evening, right after he put that request forward, that I wanted to be a co-sponsor on this. Looking at what has come forward, and Councilman and I have talked today and, you know, by email, and then sent some additional information to the city manager, or to the attorney, to the city attorney, the better part of this morning, I've been on the phone constantly, not only with NOTO businesses, with some downtown folks, with some other folks I'm not going to name, but have deep vested interests in this as supporters of all levels of business. And I believe very strongly, because of that, and also because of the commitment that I've had for the past three and a half years to bring this to light, is that the levee and the riverbanks need to be included on this, because if it is not included on this, and, you know, we don't have what we would consider typical sidewalks there, if we don't, what's going to happen, as Councilman Kell stated, with relax and travelers, you know, on their way possibly to shut down, with the city now, and the county now working towards moving on the dangers that are increasing on the trails, et cetera, where are those folks going to go? And they are not, if I have anything to say about it, they are not going to go on the riverbanks, because that, they're still there. And there is, there is going to be flight, there is going to be movement, and we just can't have it continue along the river, where there is still any number of camps in District 2. So in my conversations with Councilman Dobler and with city attorney, however, you know, the footage is on this for trails and sidewalks, but to also have the levee and the riverbanks added to this as well, maybe something between and including, you know, levee structures, riverbanks, et cetera. And I know we're just beginning this conversation, but I just wanted to make sure that that was put forward. Thank you, Mayor.
City Attorney.
Councilwoman, so for your knowledge, the levee currently is included as someone where that camping is not allowed under our current ordinance. It's considered critical infrastructure, and so that is somewhere itself. I would ask permission to allow Dan and I to work over the next week or so on creating some maps, so that you guys can see percentages of, if we add the riverbank, what does that do? If we add 500 feet on the trails and 30 feet on sidewalks, what does that do? Our map guru was out of the office, Jacek, that does occasionally happen. And so if you give us time over the next week or so to play with a lot of numbers, hopefully we can get you back some good maps, so that you guys can all consider and make decisions.
Councilman Kell.
I'd like to include, like, any, any, like, city property or things that is for public use, you know, if you have anything that's, when it prevents others from enjoying what they're paying their taxpayers for, we should look at that, because we could end up having, those could be the hotbed spots that, you know, and that's our biggest part right now, is one of our complaints is the trail system. We spend all this money on the trail system, and people are scared to use it.
Well, Dan and my goal, after our talking with Ryan today, is to create you a map that shows, like, county property in this color, and city property in this color, and school district in this color, so that you can get a real idea of who is all, needs to be at the table as we talk about some of this, too.
Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think everything is going to be answered when we get that magic map, so I don't have a question anymore. Thank you.
If I could, and then Councilman Duncan, and then Councilwoman Hiller, when you're looking at that map, is it possible also to put a, I know this is putting more detail, an overlay that would show where we know currently there are concentrations of camp sites?
I hesitantly look at Dan, I am not sure, but we can try. I don't want to promise anything I can't do, but we will see what we can come up with. I promised him I wouldn't do this, and I just did it.
So the planning department doesn't know where those are, so we would need help with some, you know, housing or somebody else, and we can certainly map whatever we can have data on, so we'll work with that.
I've seen some maps where it at least gives us a general idea of where that concentration is. I don't know who generated them, but I know they exist. I think it would help put a perspective to, as to how that would shift or move some of that property. Thank you, Dan. Councilman.
Couple random questions and then a couple comments. Do we have any issues on the riverbanks about authority? I mean, for instance, I know there's sections where we couldn't ban fires, because you can go down the river, you can hop off, you can light a campfire.
Yeah, that's one of the questions Sylvia Davis and I have been messaging back a little bit. We need to do some legal research about where the Army Corps of Engineers authority goes, where is ours, what do they delegate to us and expect us to do? So we'll work on getting all that research for you over the next week and a half or so, too.
Okay, because I also know people can, you know, go down it and camp for an evening or whatever, so yeah, that would be good to know, so we don't, so we can do as much as we can without getting in trouble with the Army. So the county on Thursday will be discussing their camping ordinance, which is essentially a ban on all property in the county. They're justifying that in a way, and I've expressed this to one of the county commissioners, that both, as a representative on this council in the city of Topeka, and in my day job as the League of Kansas Municipalities, gives me heartburn, because essentially what that is going to do is push everyone into all the cities in Shawnee County, right? We're obviously the largest, but there's other cities in the county, and I've tried to express to them, it would be really nice if they would come to the table and have a conversation with us before they do that, about how we can do some of this together, before they just basically, whether this is their intent or not, say, good luck, Godspeed, it's not our problem anymore, good luck to the cities of Shawnee County. So I just put that out into the world, both to let the county know, I'm not sure their approach is going to be beneficial to what they think it is, and it's certainly going to hurt the cities within the county. From my perspective, I think the two things we can do pretty quick, over the next month or so, or however that shakes out, as you, we dump all this work on the staff over there, is put some kind of limit in place on days. I know 10 is what we've proposed. Folks I've talked to, I may shoot out seven, and that seems simple, but sometimes it's easier. So when our folks go to them and they say, what day did you camp here? Tuesday? Well, it's Tuesday, you got to move along, right? Seems simple, but it's an easier way to track that time. I fully support, as I've let them know, Councilman Dobler's proposal of those feet requirements along the trails and sidewalks of the map you'll get us. I guess my third question was, and you alluded to it earlier, we had talked at one point, and I'm sure it just became an impossible task, of defining what a neighborhood is and how we actually say, so if we wanted to have an ordinance that says, look, you got limits in the areas that it's legal, you know, you can't do it in the trails, and also, as a matter of safety, you can't go into neighborhoods, but did we get stuck on what, I know we were trying to define what neighborhoods were?
So yes, we did get a little stuck on it. When you research the case law for neighborhood, it's kind of like some other case law, like, you know it when you see it. And a neighborhood seems to be, you know it when you see it. If you're looking around, and the character and nature of the neighborhood seems to be a bunch of houses and yards, and it feels like a neighborhood, it probably is one. We looked at residential zoning, that didn't quite work, because not all residential zoning and neighborhoods, and it's mixed use, and it's other things, and unfortunately, we ended up with just, you know it when you see it, if you're in a neighborhood.
Okay, well, that makes sense, because like I said, so I know that's an extra little quirk, as we try to figure out how to protect some of those areas due to safety, so thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller, did you?
Thank you, Mayor. Somehow, balls sort of dropped in holes over the weekend, and I've been immersed in this in my own district, certainly with the reports of NOTO and SOTO and just everywhere, and let me propose, just, it's kind of a flip on all the discussions that we've had, but maybe it would work. And for one thing, I assume that we're all wanting to go forward with an assumption that all of our city ordinances apply to everyone all the time, so trash, litter, human waste, dogs at large, criminal activities, all those things that we're, as we're moving forward, we're going to expect everybody to live by those rules. So setting that aside for the moment, what if we would coordinate with the county ideally and sync up what we have, but what if we simply banned totally camping on public and private property in the city, with the exceptions being where there is an organized campground or with permission of the property owner, whoever that is? Because private property has come into this, too, not just public. So with that, then, on private property or on any of these permissions, whether it's public or private, that if you were there, you would have, it would be the responsibility of that camper to document that they did have that permission, not only to provide some sort of evidence, but to provide whoever was asking with contact information for that. some sort of evidence, but to provide whoever was asking with contact information for that permission grantor, so that that, that, that source could be contacted to confirm that in fact, the individual had permission. And, and I see that because we've run into a lot of problems on vacant land as well as vacant houses, where somebody said they had permission, or they had evidence as if they had permission. And if there's a way that legally we can say, there's a default assumption that you don't have permission unless we can talk to that entity, private owner or the government ourselves, and confirm that they told you it was okay to camp there. And then perhaps highlight overall that there'd be some exceptions to, that we would never, however, let public or private grant permission within whatever X feet of a trail. We've got the downtown prohibitions in the camping ordinance, you know, in doorways, and some of the ones that we have for our downtowns already. And I think that, you know, when, when camping is allowed, that we would expect that they would, again, abide by all of our, our local ordinances, and then also any rules that were set, set out, for instance, by a governmental entity, just like they do in a national park, leave no trace, you can be here, but you got to clean up after yourself. I'm not even sure that's necessary, but if we, we just kind of flipped it and said, no camping anywhere unless you have permission of the property owner. I think it would be nice if we could, I read what the county had and I know what ours has, if we could sync up with the county, how much notice we give people if they are discovered camping someplace without permission. They vary, we both have this 24-hour thing, but then the county has this extra seven days in the publication that they have. Our rule is to hold their stuff for 30 days, the county is proposing to do 90 days, seems like it would, would be helpful to all of us to sync up the procedures that we have as well. One other thing that maybe is a hitch in, in things, but maybe would work out in the long run, is I know that the planning is getting ready to bring the accessory structures ordinance forward, or at least that's my understanding, that would provide more appropriate and approved housing for low-income people, if we're allowed to do a tiny house in the backyard or whatever. When we consider that, right now, as, as was discussed, you're not allowed to, technically not allowed to camp or sleep in an RV on private property. If we did this, ban on camping unless you have the permission of the property owner, which would then allow you to stay in an RV on the property, which right now people can't, it might solve a couple of things in terms of what you brought up. And I've, I've had those situations come up in my district as well. Mine have been without permission, but, but if there was permission, again, with, with whatever exemptions we have, maybe we could just pull something, start with a ban instead of start with permission, and that could be simple and, and might work if, if the law would allow some of those things.
I acknowledge Councilwoman Nager and then Deputy Mayor Dobler, Councilwoman Ortiz, Councilwoman Vadiviyakla, Councilwoman Kell. No, no, hardly keep track, so take your number and wait your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to ask a question about the 500-foot buffer. I know that in the last month or so, the big story was the couple that was camping near the skate park at 22nd Place and Washburn. And that was on the Shanga Creek, and it was kind of a, from what I could understand, also a question of basically jurisdiction. So if you can't, if the city goes ahead and says you cannot camp within 500 feet of the Shanga Creek, does that mean that our departments, including the police department, would then have the authority to go ahead and act in those kind of situations to go ahead and resolve them?
Yes, and so we are a unique city in the fact that our county has our parks and our trail system, but it's still within the city limits. And so if you go back to when we originally deeded those over and the interlocal agreements and contracts we entered into, city ordinances still apply in the city. So we still apply in county parks and they still apply on the Shanga Trail, but then on those particular parts that are county property, like the trail itself or in the parks, county has concurrent jurisdiction for their resolutions. So they can do county stuff, we can do city stuff, they can't do city stuff, we can't do county stuff. But if it's a city ordinance, we would have authority over that.
Okay.
And then the 500 feet can apply to both public and private property and should apply to both equally if it's in the interest of public safety.
All right, that clarified everything. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Good, because I was just about to forget what I was going to talk about. I, I guess when, when we're looking at the river and who has jurisdiction over what, if, if there is a portion of the river that the city ultimately retains jurisdiction over, I think, you know, in my mind, the river's really no different than a sidewalk. You're, if you're boating down the river, a lot of people do, a lot of recreation on the river, you're, you're in harm's way as much as you are if you're on a sidewalk or trail. So I would see if there's an opportunity to extend that, you know, that theory of safety to the river. Thank you.
Perhaps, if I may, something else that you could consider as you looked at that on the record is the pollutants into the river stream, the dangers of that as we look about waste and trash and the things that go in the river stream as a public safety issue.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
To Karen, I will never support camping with somebody's permission on their property if it's in, in the city limits. And I will tell you, I'll send you pictures. So I have a gentleman that set up shop at 914 Highland with the permission of the owner, still in electricity, loose dogs that's biting a 93-year-old woman, he's got more junk on there than the Lord allows, and they finally, Code is, they're sick of it, and our officers. So they, so guess what? They went and cited him, told the owner they're, they're getting ready not to come down hard on him. So you know what he did? He moved his stuff to 900 Highland, right next door, and then 900 Golden. These are two new people. This, this landlord came, said, you better get it off of there, I'm going to shoot you. So you know, so, so then you know what he did? This case got closed at 914. He went to Highland, he's moved it now to Golden. This guy says, okay, now I've got to get, you know, because you know who it falls back on? It falls back on the property owner. And they, they can't get him. So now you know what he's did? I sent an email, city manager can contest to that Monday morning, I said, I'm looking out, he started back, because we've closed 914, he's moved everything back to 914. We have to start a new case, we have to go through the room and the road. Today I look up, he's got stuff at 900 Golden, he's got stuff at 900 Highland and 914, he's got three properties full of stuff. Went around the corner and he had stuff over down there.
With permission on all?
No.
Okay.
Well, no, with permission on the one down the street, yes. They're supposed to be working with, I've, I've put Amanda in there, prosecution saying that the owner's saying, it's, it's going to take how long Amanda to evict him? And he can't get rid of his stuff, or he could get sued for getting rid of his junk. I will never support that. This guy has, it's been over a year that I'm still fighting, that we have our officers out there banging on the door, asking them to move it. We've got, now we've got prosecution involved. Because you know what? People feel sorry for these people. I don't know who the contractor was, but this guy's been living in this camper for two years. And you know what? All he has to do is move it. That's all the contractor had to do, was move it a couple of feet.
John did a really great letter to somebody today at work.
But legally, we're trying to get him out of there, and they feel sorry for him. I've got neighbors from east to west and north and south, I've got Code complaining to me, I've got the police department back there complaining to me, they're trying. But it all started out with him saying, okay. They even went over there and offered services to go here, to go there, he don't want that. He wants to be left alone, and he's, there's so much junk. I don't know where this stuff comes from. And he's illegally burning on top of that. And he's selling drugs on top of that. Do I need to go on? I will never support that, never support that.
Councilwoman Vadiviyakla.
Thank you, Mayor. I would not support that either. I think we need to stay on the path we're on with what Councilman Dobler has brought forth. I do want to say that this map that you're referring to, I have Wade, former city manager Wade gave me his, I have it if you all want it. It has everything staked out, and it was done on foot. If, that is how they pinpointed, a red dot, and, and it's not across, yeah, it is across the city, it's the whole city, where you could see that 90% of the encampments were in District Two.
Something like that.
So I have, he gave it to me. Well, I have a hard copy if anybody needs it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kell.
All right, I don't want to get too restrictive on camping on private property because you're looking at situations where, like tonight, burning up hot, someone can go pop a tent outside, go out in the breeze, get out of their house if they, their air conditioning isn't working. Or in the instance of the RV, I would sit there and say, let's put a time limit on it, show progress on the house, then you get an extension on that time limit if you're working on a house. But I also like to see in that situation, like my wife and I have an RV, if our air conditioner blew up tonight, I'd go right to pick up our RV, put it in our, in our driveway, and I'd sleep in it tonight for the air conditioning. So it's this, we, we need to not be too restrictive. Or instances of, of how many of us as kids camped in our backyard? And then all of a sudden now, some kids want to pop a tent, and now a neighbor wants to call and complain that kids popped a tent up in the backyard, which will happen. So well, it's context, but if the rules are too restrictive, and we're handcuffing our officers on too restrictive rules, that's what I'm saying, I don't want to be too restrictive. Or, or in another area of, of, I want to look at is supporting our businesses and what's happening on the streets. The quick shop down by my house on 37th there gets destroyed every day. They bring in the water bottles and they'll, they'll hook them up to the, to the, the soda spouts, and have it all up into the soda spout, and I have to go tell the clerk, say, hey, you probably need to go clean all those now, because it's almost like putting their mouth on the soda spout. And they'll just destroy the store, dumping stuff all over the place, and, and I know the store's trying to be helpful, but they're just going to the aggravation port. Burger King on 37th and Topeka, they, they just, they've quit calling the police department because there, there's just no response. They're like, trying to call is, 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 I feel, is a waste of their time, so we need to be able to support our businesses. And then on the streets, I wasn't here when the ordinance was put in on where, and where the spots were, you can't paint handle, but if you look at a place like Kansas and Topeka Boulevard there, right before you get to 470, signs that say, do you want to see me play real-life Frogger? And, and crossing the street, we, we didn't look at some of those high-traffic intersections that were, they're still allowed to happen, where people are walking around in the street causing accidents, causing disturbances. And so I think we need to look at the streets also. And then another thing I need, thing needs to happen is, I think it'd be good for our city attorney to go to the police department on the different shifts and maybe answer some questions on what's allowed, what's not allowed, and especially if we pass something. So in this way, they understand what's allowed, what's not allowed, because there's several times I've had property owners that have vacant properties who've called me and said, I've called the police, and the police say there's nothing that we can do. So I think at least if the, they can ask any questions that pop up, ask scenarios, certain areas, things like that, and then Amanda will be able to answer that, what, what you're allowed to do, what you're not allowed to do as an officer. So then that way, there's some less confusion going on between what's allowed, what's not allowed, and what the officers are telling some of these property owners and some of the businesses. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor and Councilman Emerson. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, you know, what Councilwoman Ortiz brought up, I guess, is something that's kind of been troubling me about the whole thing, is that how do you really enforce this, and how do you just keep it from being like a whack-a-mole thing where, you know, you started proceeding on one place people are at, they pick up and move their stuff, and three or four days later, and everything we have with due process, the stuff takes seven, eight, 10 days to work through. I mean, really effectively, how, how do we really do anything unless it's just like a rest on site or something? I mean, I, I don't.
I think that's probably the heart of the question that no city's figured out, right? 14th Amendment requires due process notice, you can't get around it, it is what it is. Evictions require notice under state law, it is what it is. When the person moves from one to another property, it's a new case, you can't just continue it over. As to enforcement, TPD is probably the better answer on how this looks like in reality. But I don't know the answer. I don't know that any city in the country has figured out that answer yet.
And, and I guess kind of a practical matter, on this map, I just, I don't know what data you use, but just looking at this, you know, I know a lot of these streets in my district, as, as well as in two and three, don't have sidewalks. So I, maybe the assumption is any place where there's a, where the street here, you figure there's a sidewalk, but there's not in a lot of these residential areas, so I guess I'd want to be.
I defer to Dan on that. He made the map.
The map maker.
Yeah, you get in certain areas, yeah.
And I guess my, my worry is, you concentrate it now where, okay, there are these three neighborhoods in town that's where you can do it.
Yeah, that's correct. There are neighborhoods without sidewalks, certain larger public spaces don't necessarily have sidewalks. So there will be, if you could zoom in on this map, there will be areas that are, that aren't covered, even though most of the city is. So yeah, the, the sidewalk part of it is not, not great necessarily for the, for every part of the city.
Sure, okay, thank you. That's true. So the mayor just offered his, no, never mind.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Looks like that brought some more questions to mind. I think a great discussion tonight. I think there's at least a, a little bit of a path forward somewhere. I think all of these, all of the ordinances have, have validity. I like the idea of just banning camping, I don't know that that's going to work. I guess my goal was to, no matter what we look like, nobody solved this issue. So no matter what we look at, there's going to be some, what, how about this, how about that? Let's just start somewhere. This, this ties it to public safety, ties it to pedestrians or cyclists, ties it to a piece of infrastructure and a two-dimensional measurement. It can't get much simpler than that. You know, defining a neighborhood, time, all these other things, it starts, starts getting tougher. Let's start simple, we can always add on to it as we, you know, get these other things figured out. So that's all I had to say. Appreciate the support. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vadiviyakla.
Just one more thing as an add-on to Councilman Dobler. This is absolutely, it's always going to exist, even with Built for Zero, it, there's still a function, there is still a level of homelessness that is always going to be there, that we're never going to get rid of. So we have, we have to understand that. The other thing is, is that for this to stay in this governing body and to have this dialogue and to be able to have, you know, Councilman Dobler bring this forward, even though this is so challenging and so difficult, to me, this is when we're at our best. Yes, I admit, it's because I've really wanted something like this for a long time, but more than that, the deepest and most difficult subjects we're tackling, but we're not doing it in different ways. We're trying to do it here so that people can see, and I truly think that that's when councils work their best. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
I, I would like to know, Amanda, if we can have in there like this guy that goes back within so many days, if you can get it, so like if they're camping somewhere, you know, like, like he knows that click, that first, that, that property, that case is closed, so he knows they got to start all over again. Is there somewhere in the ordinance that we can put that if they, that they cannot, that same person cannot be there within so many days?
Like habitual?
Yeah, like habitual, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of where my mind was going to. Yeah, that's kind of where my mind was going to. I don't know on whether or not you can say if they've been there so many times, they're excluded. That was part of the issue in Grant's past case was you violate it so many times, you're permanently excluded. But what I do think you could do is what we do on lots of other crimes. If you're a habitual violator of it, the penalties continue to increase. And then it becomes a more severe offense because you're continuing to get new citations. So I think you could tack it on that way, but I'll do some research on it to see if there's other options about excluding.
Because this isn't his property. It's somebody else's property. But they say they're trying to evict him. I don't know if that's the case because he's just going in circles.
Well, and so, for example, we do through prosecution, through discretionary requests for increased sentencing, if you have somebody that breaks into vacant houses repeatedly, yes, it is still the same misdemeanor offense every time. But our prosecutors use their discretion to ask the court for increased sentences for people that are constantly performing the same offense. And so we can do that currently under our code. So I'll do some research on this and figure out if that's something that would work well.
And I want to say this, in public health and safety, and I'll try to have Liz look it up. We, we discussed the camping ordinance. I don't know if you remember this, Karen, and people did, you know, people did come out because they wanted to be able to camp in their backyard or camp in their camper. And I know that there's so many days that you can, you know. And so we didn't, we, I think we excluded that or purposely left that in there so people, people could do that, you know. I don't, I don't, I don't think. And I wanted to say to Spencer, I had a lady that called me and she said, in your area that they, we need to do something about panhandling because it's getting very, very aggressive. This was a bondsman that called me and he wanted me to give you that, that, pass that along. And he said, they're, they're, they're hitting his window. They, I mean, they're just becoming more aggressive. And when we, again, we had it in public health and safety and people came out and said, how could you guys do that to these poor people? But it's, it's just getting worse. I can give his name.
No, yeah, give me his name. I, I do think at some point, it's probably time to review some of those pan, you know, times have changed. That's about a six-year-old law. Probably intersections have changed, there's traffic patterns to look at that safety issue. I just wanted to say, one last thing this evening on the issue. You know, we are not a city, we are a city that cares. And I think the, the presentation this evening showed people one aspect of what we do. We, no exaggeration, spend millions of dollars of resources in this city to help those in need, whether it's through our CIT programs, whether it's through direct assistance. And I can tell you, in looking at what cities across the state do, we're near the top of that list if you're ranking them, especially per capita, but even in general. And so I, I think that's why it, it's easier is not the right word. But we can sit here to some degree and say, if you need help, we are a city that's going to help you. But there is, and there is a certain segment of the unsheltered population that admittedly is the toughest to deal with because some days they want help and some days they don't need, think they need help because of, they're suffering through addiction and mental health issues. And that's its own sort of category. But there is also a category that is here because to some degree, we've made it easy. And so, and we just have. People know, go to Topeka, it's a little easier to camp there and settle in, and I can just do that. And that is not all of that population. I'm not going to blanket them, but it is a certain segment of it. And so, as I've said, I support what Councilman Dobler has brought forward. I think that's something we can probably pass fairly quickly. I would still like us to, as a follow-up, doesn't have to be piece of that, look at the timed ordinance of days because I think at some point, it isn't about making it tougher for people, you know, necessarily. But it is trying to say to the people, if you want help, we're here for you. And if you don't want that help and are going to come just make it easy, it's not going to be so easy in Topeka. Right? And I think that's what some of those restrictions do is to send that message. And so at some point, I'd like us to follow up with that look and then we can go deeper into the other things. The other question I have and do not have to answer is tonight, and maybe we do this to some degree, is to some of these issues we've talked about, can we not create a system where cumulative sanctions add up? I mean, similar like one DUI and then you get the second DUI and you get the third DUI, right? I mean, can we do that? Do we do that? Is that something down the line we can look at?
We do already do that. You, misdemeanor offenses ranges, it's a wide spectrum in the amount of days that you can sentence someone to. And so maybe on the first time, you ask for five days, and the second time, you're asking for 10 days, and then it's 15 days, and then it's 20 days. And we do that now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. I know that the idea of the total ban is different, but I want people to think about it a little more, if you would. The, I, we, we've got lots of moving parts here. The kind of situation that Councilwoman Ortiz is talking about, we've had in District 1 as well. The problem is that a private owner has allowed this to happen through changing our culture of property maintenance and the work that the city attorney's office has been doing as well. You know, there's, there are multiple cumulative sanctions for a property owner that would allow the property to have illegal structures, to have trash, to have, you know, that property owner needs to be held responsible for whatever he or she is allowing on that property at 914. And so there's, there's a number of different ways we can, can address this. I too was never comfortable with the panhandling ordinance and just randomly, and almost randomly, picking out certain intersections in town so that you kind of had to know and you could go around and figure out the right, right corner that you could panhandle. Pan, you know, go out to Panera Bread and panhandle there because that's not one of the intersections that hit the, hit the, hit the screen the year we passed it. You know, I don't want us to be in, always looking at where the border is and where the 500 feet from the trail is. And, and instead, if it's, if it's really not okay and we don't want to be just chasing people around, let's figure out something that's a little more comprehensive, that ties in with our property maintenance code, that, that ties in with, with the other things so that, and I think maybe it can be done. You know, we've got overlapping jurisdictions of county, state lands. But if we can have an ordinance overall that says it's not okay if you're in the city limits and that whether you're public or private, it's not okay unless you're, because that would mean that anybody who gives permission is taking responsibility for the fact that they allowed that to happen on their property. It's just a different way of looking at it, but maybe worth considering. Thank you.
Okay. We'll bring this discussion to a close, but I'm, I know it'll continue. We can, I think, continue to offer suggestions to the city manager and the city attorney so that they can take them under consideration as they work toward where we want to be. A comment was made, though, earlier about whatever we put in place, does it make any difference if we don't have the capacity to enforce it? And I think that's the case with a lot of ordinances that we have in place already. Traffic ordinances come to my mind. A lot of them are in place and a lot of them just pretty much don't get enforced just because we don't have the capacity. So, and this may rub people the wrong way. But I think for us, a starting point, at least how I see it, is to support a private effort that has already initiated, the Clean Team Downtown. Safety, Safety and Clean Team. They've already initiated it. They're doing work. They're doing work that can be supported by our city services and our police department. We have an ordinance in place. We have the signs we can put in place or will get the signs. And that's what it starts to, I think it starts. If we're going to start enforcing things, let's do it right now where we know there's a concentrated population that is having an effect on the progress that we're experiencing in downtown Topeka. And let's start one place and then see how effective it is and how it needs to be adjusted and adapted. But for my part, continue the discussion, continue to bring up the suggestions, but let's put some teeth into what certain private parties like Seth Wagner and others who have on their own started an effort that we need to support, period. We need those partners. So again, I encourage you to continue the discussion. Send those suggestions to the city manager and the city attorney. But I look to hopefully bring some more resources to the effort that has already started downtown and see how it works. Let's just quit talking and let's get something done. All right? Thank you very much for the discussion. I appreciate it. We'll move on now to public comment. And Brenda, I don't see anybody signed up. Okay. So we'll move on to announcements. Brenda?
There is no council meeting next week.
Yay. No council meeting. You can stay home.
Now we'll cancel.
City manager?
I don't know if I can follow that. So Mayor and governing body, I am just so happy to see you all here at one time at this gathering. And you did a good job. These are tough discussions for people to have. You can imagine citizens that, just regular citizens that have to have these discussions. But I, I agree with Councilwoman Valdivia Akala. You have to have them. They are tough discussions between all of you. And just remember, you're the elected leaders of this community. And the citizens want to see that their leaders are thinking through this. So that's good, that, that's good work, believe me. Over the course of my career, I've seen governing bodies that run from having controversial discussions. The other thing is, through this heat, we've had a lot of employees out there in the heat. We, we have checked, you, a number of you have sent me emails checking on them, what we're doing. I've communicated with a number of the directors. And what we do is we provide cool vests, cool wraps. We provide water, salt tablets. We have, we, we tell people that to get in out of the sun, if they're working out of there, once an hour, get in the truck, get in some shade. If you're feeling sick, bring that to somebody's attention. So we are constantly reinforcing out there what we're telling our citizens to do in hot weather like this also. And today I checked, and at least when I checked, we have not had any heat-related illnesses yet from our workforce. But, but your directors are all aware, especially people that work outside, work in the heat, that, that we need to remind people to take care of themselves and that supervisors' responsibilities are to help make sure that in extreme weather conditions, that their employees are protected from those elements. The homeless, we were, the mayor and I were at a presentation by TRM today. It was the last presentation they made about the history of the rescue mission and what, what they're doing and how they're doing it. It was an interesting, informative presentation. I think this was the last one that they had. But I'm pretty sure that they also did it, did a video of those. And you can go on the website and look at it. I, I, one, one final remark. I, I hear the frustration in your voice when we talk about city and county issues. And I would urge you, I would urge you, whether you have to do a motion to direct the mayor to reach out, but I would urge you to do what you can to request a joint public meeting with the county commission and to talk about some of these issues publicly, especially those areas that, that you have common interest. Homeless, the hotel, other areas like that, the Shunga Trail, those types of things. I think that's important for you to do. I don't think it should be a one and done. I actually think it ought to be, you don't need another meeting to go to. But I actually think that you ought to do that, at the most, once a month. Perhaps schedule it for once a quarter and understand that it's a conversation for elected officials to have with elected officials about the common issues that face both of you. That's my suggestion to you. The hotel, let me, let me say this about the hotel. When you first brought me here, my first question was, why would you do that? All right? You had no other option. The only other option you had was to not acquire that hotel and let it denigrate even further from where it is, from where its status is. That would not have done the manor system any good. That would not have done this community any good. So I think once you realize, once you're in for a dime, you're in for a dollar. And the work that Braxton and staff are doing to try and get the numbers to tell us what it takes to put that hotel back into a place in the community it should be, is important work. I'd rather not be gaining the experience you're giving me by rebuilding a hotel. But sometimes we have to step out of what our comfort zone is and do something that's in the best interest of the community. And trying to get that hotel upgraded, trying to get it into the hands of someone that will understand how important it is to, to Topeka and to this area is an important mission that your staff is undertaking. And I hope that the public understands that too. Because the worst thing that could happen is that we walk away from that. So that's my homily for tonight, except that I know my wife has been faithfully watching and she's probably rolling her eyes right now. And, because she and my family hear homilies like that every once in a while. Thank you for the work you do. Thank you for what you do to represent the citizens of this community.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I too would like to echo thank yous to everyone. I mean, all of us on the council have been having all these private conversations with constituents about all these issues. The staff has worked so hard on homeless, hotels, and budget and everything else that we're doing. And, and sometimes it's messy, I think, but we're doing some good stuff and we're going in a good direction. And we, we are open about it the best that we can. And I'm proud of that. I appreciate your mentioning the city-county meetings. We've talked about it a little bit. I really support that. Maybe we need to start with a series, inviting them for a series of three because we have a number of issues. So I'll make that ask that you suggested right now. I know that also Councilwoman Valdivia Akala, who has really led the charge on homeless issues, has, has kind of stayed, stayed out there that she hoped that we would address it as a committee of the whole, as a body of the whole, rather than put it in committee. And I agree. City manager, I don't know if it was you, sent us a memo not too long ago. The thought about having, at, at an appropriate time, but maybe pretty soon, having the rescue mission come and visit with all of us about what's up and, you know, wherever it's appropriate time-wise, I, I support.
I did, and I actually remember that memo I sent to you. But the last time I talked to Amanda, she was going to be here in September to make a presentation to you. And I will follow up with her and see what her timeline is then.
Okay. Great. And then on a little lighter note, the heat is supposed to break on Friday. So I want to remind everybody that Get Down in T-Town will be the next day when the high is only around 90 and the low is going to be in the 60s. So it's going to be a great time to show up at the Brown v. Board mural between 4:00 and 9:00 and listen to some music and have, eat some great food off the food trucks and have a good time. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder to everyone, and I think there honestly needs to be no reminder, just please take care in the heat. I was picking up the grandkids today from school and the car obviously needed a little bit of freon. And I was there and the car was slowly cooling off as I was waiting for Kennedy. And I thought, my God, I don't recall that I've ever felt it this hot. And then when you look at the heat index, the heat index yesterday was, I think, like 100 and, at the max, it was 124 degrees. Today it was like 116. And that was really scary, just to know that. Today, it was like 116, and that was really scary, just to know that there's people out there that are working in this heat, and that there are people trying to get out and about, school kids. I watched the Topeka West school kids that get out and walk home to apartment complexes or their homes that may be up to a mile away, and it's just, I think, a very scary time, this heat dome that is over this part of the United States, it is impacting 140 million people. And everybody pray that the power grids just keep doing their thing, and that's it. Be safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Richard, I just want to say, unlike some people on this council, listen to Rita. Listen to Rita. Rita knows best. Happy wife, happy life. Some people don't even listen to their mom on this council. Anyway, I just want to say to everybody that the school kids, all of their sports activities has been shuffled around until the early wee mornings. Trust me, I got up at 5:00 to make sure grandson number one was at soccer practice at 5:30, so there's a lot of traffic that the kids, that they have to get that practice in, and so I could not believe, you know, they had the soccer team out there, they had football out there, and then they also had cross country, so there's a lot of traffic. If you're one of those people that are moving, I'm usually not one of those people, but I just wanted to say that. Also, check on the elderly, you know. I went to one of my constance houses, and they didn't have the air on because they didn't want it on, not that, you know, and I'm just, I just can't believe it, but anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Other than, I was told to be here, Mr. Mayor, to make sure that somebody knows that this is my spot, and I'm still being here for another two years, if they want to move in my district and run against me, but, so I was told to be here, so that's why I'm here.
I appreciate the fact that you are here. Temporary Councilman.
I would just ask the councilwoman if she has any signs I can borrow. Nothing else, Mayor?
Councilman Kell.
With this heat, also just remember your animals. You know, don't leave them out too long. I've had a dog years ago that, five minutes outside, and I had heat stroke, and, you know, I put a timer on, and it went that quickly. So, the other thing is, I'm not running right now, but I saw another two years, but we do have some elections coming up, and there will be events going on. Please go out, meet the candidates, ask questions, get to know them. You don't know how good it is as a candidate when you're out there, and you actually have people come up asking you questions, and that's when you really get going, and know what you're all about. And it's a good way for the candidates to know who's out there and who's involved, to be able to pick for committees, for us to talk to them more about what's going on in the city, and get ideas. So, make sure you get up to these events that are going on between now and Election Day, but most candidates show up to it, read stuff in the newspaper when they answer their questionnaires, but just inform yourself. And I just want to bring it up now, because there'll be plenty of events between now and Election Day.
Councilwoman Neger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Election Day will be November 7th, for those who are watching. Two good ways to go ahead and beat the heat for right now are, there are two wonderful exhibitions happening, both in District Six, that are highlighting the marginalized and the displaced. Right now, there is an exhibition at the Rita Blitt Gallery. Right now, the Mulvaney Art Museum at Washburn is closed for renovations, in preparation for their centennial in 2024, but the Rita Blitt Gallery is still open, and they are currently putting on an exhibition called "There is a Woman in Every Color: Black Women in Art," and it's organized by the Bodine College Museum of Art, and it examines black women's representation in American art over the past two centuries. So, there's a lot of history, there's a lot of identity, and it's something that you can really educate yourself about, a very rich part of our heritage as Americans, and a very marginalized portion of our population, black women. Another exhibition that's going to be opening on September 8th is the Do Pica, a land acknowledgement exhibit at the Alice C. Sabatini Gallery in the library. And that is put on with the collaboration of Lisa LaRue Baker, a Cherokee tribal citizen and a gallerist of 785 Arts. It is to acknowledge and honor the original inhabitants of Shawnee County, the Osage, the Ka, the Delaware, the Potawatomi, the Shawnee, and the Wyandotte nations. They have here, many tribes have cultivated this land, built homes, named the flora and fauna, and were forcibly moved to and away from Shawnee County. And this is to go ahead and highlight those contributions they have made to our community, far ahead of any time that this place was called Kansas. So, those are two great things to go ahead and do in the next month or so. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, my wife and I took our granddaughter to the Children's Discovery Center on Saturday. Great place, another great place to beat the heat, an amazing place, really. So, I'd encourage you to support that endeavor, as well as use it if you can. Great thing is, you walk through the parking lot, you see tags from Douglas County, I saw Sedgwick County tag, and so it brings folks in. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just three quick things. I don't do this very often, but when it's family, you do what you can. I'm going to shamelessly plug something that my brother does. He has, a few years ago, he's a bodybuilder. I didn't get that. He doesn't train me, so please don't take that as a deal. He actually, several years, went to Nationals. He is a Tepi, he is still living here, he has started a company, he has AAO training, he now has some supplements and other products that Walmart now will sell through their website. So, if you're into that stuff, and you take that stuff, you can find it on Walmart, but that's a big deal for a little Topeka company like that to actually get that platform and do it. So, go support him if you can. There's my shameless plug for a family member. If you also want to beat the heat, you can come hang out with me at Fairland Plaza Thursday night at 4:30. I will be in my little spot there, inside, across from the dance factory. And then, the last thing is, tomorrow, I will be participating in at the Community Violence Prevention Summit. I know there's other individuals from the city, police department, who are participating in that. I'll be on a panel at the end of the day, as we all collectively, many voices in the community, try to see if we can take a look at some of the issues of violence in our community. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer.
Today, I believe they announced the 20 Under 40 in Topeka, and I guess I call her my niece, Lindsay, was one of those, so I'm proud of her getting into that, and congratulate everyone else who was announced in that class. So, keep an eye out. I believe 785 Magazine will have a spread on that coming this fall, so there are some of the up-and-coming leaders, and we need to support them and keep them in the community, and hopefully, some of those bright people will stay, and one or two may get on the council at some point.
I'm not, I don't have anything in specific, but I did want to ask the city attorney if she would make comment on a couple people in her office, saw the article in the paper about the prosecution with regards to domestic violence. I think that's very important, and noteworthy, so if you could give us a couple comments, I appreciate it.
I would be happy to, Mr. Mayor. We could not be prouder of the work that Bridget Markley and Kelly Trussell in our office have done, starting our domestic violence prosecution. It had been a long time since the city of Topeka had prosecuted domestic violence. It was brought to us by community organizations, saying, hey, we think the city has a role. City governments across the state have begun to do this. It was something that we didn't enter into lightly. We started looking at it back in, a year ago, July last year, and we spent six to eight months researching best practices. Bridget went on the road to all the surrounding cities, Wichita, KCK, Johnson County, to figure out what they do well, what we could do better, to truly work on best practices. It was a joint effort that Bridget really spearheaded with the court system, TPD, things like facilities, having to create a victim room downstairs that is secure, so that when victims come to court, they feel safe, and they don't have their abuser sitting right there, or alleged abuser sitting right there. So, lots of pieces went into this, from facilities moving heaven and earth to get construction done on time, from the court system adding extra dockets, to Bridget really going above and beyond to make sure that everybody in prosecution and the court system were trained in best practices for interacting with victims and understanding the process. She is our sole prosecutor for domestic violence, and we dedicate her to it full-time. She spends significant hours of her life talking to victims and getting them to court. And sometimes, it's about recognizing a situation that is increasing in seriousness. Kelly talked in the article about cases where homicides are likely if you don't get them help, and being able to escalate those. So, it has been really exciting to watch her thrive in this area, and she is definitely one of our rising stars, that I'm very glad we stole from private practice over to city government. And so, yes, they are doing fantastic work.
Well, even in their absence, I would ask for a round of applause for them. And there is need for one executive session, if the city attorney will now read.
The motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed 40 minutes, for consultation with the city attorney to discuss attorney-client privileged matters regarding current litigation on multiple matters, as justified by KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff are required to assist the governing body in its deliberations. City Attorney Stanley.
Okay. Heard the need for executive session. Motion to move into executive session by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilwoman Neger, and we can all vote electronically again. Okay, we look for that one no now. When it pops up.
You got my back, Emerson?
Yeah. Okay. We're not going to recess into executive session, take about a 10-minute break before we start our deliberations. Thank you.
I thought you had my back.
Duncan's jumping in.
We have concluded our executive session. There's no other business coming before this body. We are adjourned.[1751.61]